Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. May I have a confirmation of a quorum Assistant City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes confirming quorum.
Very good, we have two items on closed session, I mean open session for study session and I know we're, we have a time crunch today before the seven o'clock meeting, so our first item is a study session and update on the city's Vision Zero Plan, City Manager?
Thank you Mayor, thank you Council, our first item tonight is an update on the city's Vision Zero effort. Vision Zero is a strategy aimed at eliminating all traffic fatalities and severe injuries while also promoting safe and healthy mobility for everyone. Since July of last year, the Public Works Department has made significant progress toward creating a Vision Zero Plan for the city. With grant funding, it's important to note that the city hired Kim Lee Horn and Associates and completed significant community outreach, a citywide traffic analysis, as well as a draft study. Tonight, Nicole He, a senior engineer with the Public Works Department and the project manager for Vision Zero will present on this very important topic and it is her first presentation to you as a city council.
Thank you. Welcome. Is that on?
It's on. Thank you, thank you City Manager for the introduction, good evening Mayor and Council, my name is Nicole He, Senior Engineer at the Public Works Department, very happy to be here tonight and walk you through our most recent Vision Zero Plan. In the room with me tonight, we have a few other Public Works staff, our Director Craig Mobek, Assistant Director Mike Lu, Transportation Manager Steve Chan and Senior Civil Engineer Ralph Garcia, and our Project Consultant Robert Perdona from Kim Lee Horn and Mike Cody joining online. A quick agenda for my presentation, I'll start off with some background on Vision Zero, project history and then go through the project timeline and the significance of this project. I'll spend most of my time on walking you through the key elements of this Vision Zero Plan and wrap up with next steps and implementation. A picture shown here is our project sign on Vision Zero, I hope you have seen that on our streets with our slogan, Share the Road. So what is Vision Zero, as mentioned by our City Manager, it's a strategy, a really ambitious strategy to end all traffic fatalities and severe injuries in Santa Clara. It's not just a slogan, but we just bring together the communities and various stakeholders like police, fire, public works and all the other departments together to work on this plan. And why Vision Zero, first and foremost, I would say that traffic fatalities are not acceptable, even one traffic death on our streets is one too many. It's also a policy goal from our city's bicycle and pedestrian plans. As I will show you more in our data analysis, we did see a increasing trend, slightly increasing upward of pedestrian and cyclist injuries. So it's very critical to address traffic safety now. And also as a growing city with more people living in Santa Clara, I think we want to take a more proactive approach to improve traffic safety instead of waiting for the next collision to happen. Here's an overview of our project timeline, as mentioned, it started last year and over the past 12 months, we have done a lot. We completed a in-depth collision data analysis, we've done many outreach activities and also developed the recommendation of projects, programs and policy updates. And in September this year, we released the public draft Vision Zero Plan and at the very latest, October B-PAC, City B-PAC Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee Meeting, the draft plan was approved and recommended to City Council for adoption. And our goal here is to bring it back to you for City Council's final adoption in spring 2026. And why is this plan important for Santa Clara? First is our official commitment to citywide transportation safety. And as we're doing this project, it really is a plan that's shaped by the community. Throughout a lot of engagement effort, which I will have a few more slides to show, it documents and reflected a meaningful community engagement with our residents. It's also a roadmap to reach zero fatalities and severe injuries with very specific projects, programs and policy actions. And after the plan adoption, this really allows city to pursue a various level of funding, federal, state, regional and local funding to implement those changes. Here's the overview of the seven key elements of the plan, number one, leadership commitment and goal setting, strategic planning, number two, number three, collaboration and community engagement, number four, safety analysis, number five, high injury network, which is the key outcome of the safety data analysis, and then finally, priority projects, policy programs and progress and transparency, and I have a couple slides for each of these elements. So starting from the goal setting and guiding principles, as required by the grant program, we must set a target date to end all traffic fatalities and severe injuries and the goal is 25 years from now, which gives us time to implement the projects, programs and policies. And this 2050 timeline also aligned with the statewide goal on freeways of Vision Zero. Therefore, guiding principles, I'm not going to repeat myself, but really want to emphasize that Vision Zero is a shared responsibility and everyone plays a big part in Vision Zero. Next slide. Strategic planning, so during this project, we actually established a Vision Zero Working Group that comprised of city staff from various department, Public Works, Police, Fire, Community Development Departments and also one City B-PAC member that represent the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. We also have partnering agencies, we worked together with Cities of San Jose, Sunnyvale, Santa Clara County with two different departments, Public Health, Rose and Airport, VTA, Mission College, Santa Clara University, the Unified School District and Silicon Valley Bike Coalition. So it's a very diverse group that brings their perspective into the program recommendation. In terms of outreach strategies, as I mentioned before, we really try to foster that two-way communication with the community, so there are, we try many different ways. We have a dedicated project webpage, a hotline, an email for people to send in their comments. We also push out regular updates through city newsletters and social media. We also gave out free safety items, you might have seen some of those at our R and Y event, various pop-ups. And we also have a street sign, like I mentioned, there were over 150 signs out there on our city streets. We also advertised the project at VTA bus shelters along Al Camino Real, which is the state route. We also created an educational video about avoid distracted driving. In terms of project activities, we did three online surveys and received really a lot of feedback from the community with 1,300 responses and those data really gives city staff to understand the locations of near misses and you know, what change the community would like to see. We had four community workshops, some of them are in-person where people were actually working on a map together as you can see in the picture. Six pop-up events and we also brought this project to three different city commissions, Parks Recreation, Senior Advisory and Youth Commission to get feedback. And lastly, five B-PAC meetings with the last one approved the draft Vision Zero Plan. And what do we hear from the community, these are the top concerns that I want to highlight, speeding and distracted driving, poor visibility at intersections, lack of separated bike ways, lack of pedestrian infrastructure and lastly, more education, more traffic enforcement and traffic calming measures on our streets. Those are the key themes that we heard. And then on the right, this is a map from our first online survey where we allow people to interactively put down a dot, you know, and note what the concerns are, whether it's a pedestrian or a cyclist safety issue. So the bigger the bubble you see on the, on the map means more, more comments are made and everyone can see the comment, so we can collect all the feedback. So I just want to point out, like the three biggest area we see is the highly homestead area, the Lafayette Street in downtown and also on the north side, the Montague Expressway, Agnew Road area. Now diving into the, the data collection and analysis, we looked at eight years of collision data within Santa Clara, including the collisions on County Expressways and Al Camino Real. So those are, on the left, it's a summary table that shows the total number of collisions and over that eight-year period, we see, we saw about slightly under 8,000 collisions in total. Most of them are property damage only, but I want to point your attention to the, the first two rows, which are the traffic fatalities and severe injuries, so 51 fatal collisions and 139 severe injury collisions. So that's a total of 190, what we call KSI collisions, KSI is a very common acronym that you hear me speaking throughout my presentation, it represents the collision resulted in someone being killed or severely injured. So on average, in that eight-year period, we have about six to seven fatal collisions and 17 severe injuries per year. And if you take that 190 KSI collisions and plot it by year, that's where you see the chart on the right and that gives you an idea of how the trend is going. It did slightly increase from 2016 and then peaked at 2023. 2023 is the, the most recent year of data when we first started the project, but for this presentation, we added the 2024 data, preliminary data for, for your review too. So it went down from 35 to 32. So, but overall, you can see an increasing trend. So here's one of our key findings is that pedestrians and cyclists are most vulnerable. If you're only looking at all crashes, those cyclist and pedestrian involved crashes are about 7%, but when you zoom in and look at the KSI collisions, they made up about 35%. And that's really because our pedestrians and cyclists do not have the level of protection like people are riding in a vehicle. So the priority is to look at pedestrian and cyclist safety in Vision Zero. This slide, we looked at recurring collision patterns in Santa Clara that led to a fatal or severe injury crash and these are the top nine collision profiles and I just want to point out a few most common primary collision factors, driving under influence is one of them, speeding is another one, turning vehicle conflicts and vehicles running the red light or stop sign. So really understanding these profiles help us to propose targeted safety interventions to, to stop a fatal crash happen. We also mapped where all the collisions happened in Santa Clara and identified the locations, intersections and roadways that experienced the highest number of KSI collisions and that's what we call a high injury network here, H-I-N, another acronym, but this is we, a tool that we can use to prioritize our investment because one of our key finding is that the collisions are happening on a small amount of streets. So if we tackle the, the high injury network first, we can see, we can maximize the safety benefit we see through the investment. So about 60% of all collisions occur on 16% of our streets and those are the blue lines that you see in the map on the right. And that's our high injury network corridors. And among those, about 23 streets shown on the previous slide, we also want to identify our top 10 as we only have limited resources. So here are the top 10 corridor, priority corridors and these really align with what we heard from the community, many of them are along school like Monroe Street and Al Camino near the Santa Clara University. So, and, and we also included very detailed exhibits of what the conceptual design looks like in the appendix of the Vision Zero Plan. Now going to the solution part, Countermeasure Toolbox is a wide range of engineering measures that we included in the plan that really recommended by state and federal best practices. So the countermeasure are grouped into six different categories and I'm showing one or two examples for each, but the full list of countermeasures is also included in the plan. For road based segment, we have road diet, which involves a traffic lane reduction and usually we add a center turn lane for that to allow safer vehicle turning. Access restriction is another one to eliminate conflict of vehicles. Second category was intersection design with closing a slip lane that allows vehicles to better see the, the pedestrians when they're making the right turn. High visibility crosswalk. And for signal modifications, a couple more examples here, protected left turns, lead pedestrian interval is another common one, it gives the pedestrian a few seconds of head start before the vehicles making their turns, so really increase the visibility of our pedestrians. Signs and markings, a couple example here is retro reflective black plate, advanced stop bar. As for speed management, we have speed feedback sign, speed humps. Bicycle pedestrian improvement, we have separated bikeway and curb extension. And besides all the engineering solutions that I mentioned, the Vision Zero is really a comprehensive framework that includes programs and policy updates. Again, just to reiterate, it's, it's categorized into five different categories, including strategies on education, speed management, enforcement, engineering design. So we group them into safer people, safer speeds, safer streets, safer vehicles and post-crash care and we have about 30 strategies in, in the plan. And on this slide, I want to highlight some key near-term recommendations for, for city to implement. We want to update and modernize our neighborhood traffic calming program that was from 1999, improve our priority corridors, the, the top 10 projects that you see previously and also formalize a multi-department post-KSI collision review process. And lastly, focus enforcement and education on the high, high injury network corridors. Progress and transparency, after the adoption of the plan, we want to update the Vision Zero webpage regularly, develop annual reports and also update the entire plan every five years or as necessary to meet grant requirements. So that summarizes the plan, I want to take my, one more minute just to discuss the program implementation and next steps. So without dedication of resources, the, the success of Vision Zero program is, can be very limited, so in terms of staffing resources for Department of Public Works, we're looking for one new senior civil engineer and one assistant engineer and the, these two people will oversee the program implementation, including grant applications, working on the projects, implementing the programs, policy updates like the neighborhood traffic calming program and, and also continue the coordination with the Vision Zero Working Group. And as for Police Department, we're still in the internal discussion and we'll have a better understanding when we bring it back to you next time. In terms of the estimated program cost, we broke it into four different categories. Number one, the capital projects, the top 10 projects that you see previously in $20,000, that's, our estimate is about 93 million. And we anticipate that most of it will come from grant funding with city funds as a match. And as for non-capital projects, this includes all the consultant services for policy updates, ongoing educational program like Safe Routes to School, any educational campaign and online dashboard, et cetera, so that's $3.8 million. As for Vision Zero Program, as I mentioned, the staffing level cost, Public Works with those two positions that I, that I showed you before, five years, that will be $3 million. And Police Department, that's TBD right now, but overall, our current estimate is a little under 100 million. So as for next steps, we're going to take December to finalize our Vision Zero Action Plan and, and really get your feedback tonight and we're looking to bring it back to you in spring 2026 for final adoption and after that, we can apply for upcoming grants like the Safe Shoes for All Implementation Grant Program and also continue our Vision Zero Working Group coordination with different stakeholders. So that wraps up my presentation and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that presentation, it was quite comprehensive and you've all done so much work in the community to get to where we are, so thank you for putting in all that effort. I'm going to start with questions from the Council, we'll start with Councilmember Jane.
Thank you for the presentation, this is very important to me. I have a few questions. I think you're talking about 100 million over five years, right, but the whole plan is a 25-year program, so that would be half a billion dollars, is that correct? And then the thing is that we have Vision Zero, which is to reduce fatalities, but we also have our Climate Action Plan, which is our transportation demand management. So as part of our Climate Action Plan and TDM, we have goals to add separated bike lanes. So you're trying to do that for Vision Zero and you're trying to do it for TDM, how does the money get separated out for those two programs? And then, you know, I really like quick build experiments, like on Monroe, you've added all those bollards and I'm wondering, can somebody explain to me how effective those have been in terms of reducing collisions and, and injuries to mostly school kids that ride Monroe? I ride a lot to get to Wilcox, but you know, I was in Morgan Hill today and I was on Monterey Highway and they actually have a bike lane on Monterey Highway with the bollards there separating it out. It's very visible to show you where the bike lane is and it really makes people aware that there are bike lanes here. So I'm wondering if you can explain that and then, we used to have a policy with a previous Public Works Director that did not like speed humps and speed bumps and I'm a huge fan of them. I know we have at least one on Briarwood, do we have a number, can you explain how many we have and how effective they are? And I know they have these new ones that, that are better for public safety vehicles, right, can you explain what those are? And then, of course, the lighting thing is really important to me, like I'm, we put in this really nice crosswalk in downtown, whatever we have of a downtown on Monroe Street, the Rainbow Crosswalk, but as I drive by there, there's really no lighting there and I'm always afraid that I'm going to hit somebody. And so, you know, we, we spent a lot of money on Hawk Lights, those red lights that nobody can understand how they operate versus just the yellow flashing lights that I see everywhere where you don't even have to put them in the, in the street, you just put like a, a yellow flashing light on the sides and I'm wondering whether the plan envisions that. Finally, the real key thing is, since the pandemic, people forgot how to drive and I see people just rolling through stop signs and rolling through red lights and, you know, just people, we have to have really good police traffic enforcement to teach people how to drive again and, you know, maybe it requires red light cameras, so you catch people going through red lights and punish them and the word gets out, so those are my comments, thank you.
Councilmember Rachel Hall?
Thank you Mayor, thank you for the presentation, I appreciate that. Few question, I know Councilmembers asked some of those, but I want to, do we have comparative data with our contiguous cities, like how they are doing and how is their KSI data is compared to our KSI data for last eight years? Because we cannot be like a silo ourselves unless our neighboring cities contiguous roads help us out and make it all the roads safe basically. My second question was, we did not talk about the traffic cameras, like I know San Jose has implemented some, and other cities, Fremont has those, especially for intersections where there are more accidents happening. I think it makes sense that we should think about traffic cameras with the aim to punish, like, ticket those people who are jumping the lights or those things that can be. And I fully agree with flashing stop signs versus Hawk signs. I think very economical versus putting a Hawk lights over there. I see one on Los Pedras and Royal, very easy to operate, and I think those are the things where some of the unmonitored intersections where we find fatalities or accidents happening, that can be a solution, low-cost solution, and that can be, that can really help. Safe bike lane, that's important. And vehicle-free zones, I was looking at some of the European countries which follow Vision Zero, like Helsinki, Oslo, and all those countries, they're very proactive in Vision Zero, and they have reduced their fatalities to almost a minimal. I think Oslo has reduced, no fatalities, something close to zero fatalities. And so I know Santa Clara is a small city compared to those cities, but we can look into ideas or places where no vehicle can be, no vehicle zones can be implemented, basically. Most of European countries do that. And I was also looking at some of the, even within the United States, some of the cities which have done great, Hoboken in New Jersey, there is, I think, if I'm not wrong, last eight years, no fatalities in the city. So we should look at examples, what they did to implement within the United States, although European countries like Rhein in Germany, Helsinki, Oslo, they have done quite a bit of work in their own countries, but that's because our traffic habits, our speedings are different than what European countries are. They have smaller vehicles, smaller roads, and speed limits are different, basically. So that's, those are my suggestions and comments on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the report. Just, sorry I didn't get this question to you earlier, but as far as, do we have any oversight? I know that maybe permitting processes and things, but like, I'm just thinking about events like around the stadium, how traffic patterns might affect, you know, the ingress to those locations, even egress as well, but I'm thinking about ingress when you have people out onto the street and even like the, what's that roundabout at the Costco here on Coman, where you have, a lot of times you have trucks, you know, cars just out on the street because they're trying to either figure out that roundabout and things like that. So do we have any oversight over the private property and what they do as far as traffic patterns on their property that might push things out onto the street? And just one thing I kind of came up with, as Councilmember Richard Hall was mentioning, do we see that, is there any correlation with better transportation system, public transportation systems and different KSI numbers, whether it's here in the nation or in other nations? Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for the council questions. You have to turn on your light if you want to talk. Councilmember Park, you just did.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you very much for the report. I, every time I see a report done on fatalities, I always wonder if we've got a survivorship bias, like, do we have breakdowns of finer details on the fatalities and the serious injury accidents, meaning that those aren't necessarily the people that are going to come to and answer the surveys? And I want to make sure that we're looking at the data that are there. I'd also like to do a breakdown in age. I mean, I kind of want to do an analysis of all the serious injuries, and if we can have other people come in, family members, other people, you know, that saw the accidents, you know, give their input as well. I don't know if we have a habit of taking those as input when the injuries happen. I'm sure we do, but I'd just like to see that be useful somewhere. I also noticed that we have one really small section along Central Expressway between De La Cruz and Lafayette, and we just put a different type of crossing underneath the freeway there, but it concerns me that, you know, we've got that short, very short stretch that is, you know, very accident-prone. I'd like to know if there was a difference between when we put in, when we made the changes to that, that underpass and, you know, before and after? And I'd kind of like to know why that stretch is so problematic, because in the future, if there Bart comes in, I believe that that connection is going to be very important to get from Bart to anywhere. I have a personal belief that Lafayette will be a major thoroughfare, and there's no way to grow Lafayette. I mean, it is confined by transmission lines, by railroad, by other things, and this is, and Lafayette is the quickest way, the shortest shot to the train station, to the stadium, to almost everything that's going to be in our future entertainment district. I agree with vehicle-free zones. I think that we should not only be looking at where we can put in vehicle-free zones, but we should look into, maybe in five, 10, 20 years, how can we move, how can we remove traffic from every 10th street? I mean, I think that this is a really big, I mean, it's a really big statement or goal to say we want to remove traffic from every 10th street. I'm not saying everywhere, but I think we need to look at how we make roads that are just there for parking access, for houses, how we can make those into passeos, places where people are, feel safe to walk. It's not something that's going to be easy to do, but I think it's something that if we can solve this problem and we can change future developments so that we don't need streets, we don't need a street alongside every single house, well, we don't need streets that have cars, I think that would be a very, very good thing as well. I also noted that we don't, I mean, we take all these surveys. I don't know how seriously we do. I mean, we get a lot of input from people who are very concerned, but how do we get input from people who don't necessarily care about surveys, but use these, use these pathways, you know, that have been in accidents, that come in, have a near, near accident, and then leave because they don't live in the area? Like, I'm kind of concerned about that. I know that at the National League of Cities, they're very big on camera infrastructure. I mean, they talk in terms of, what is that? License plate, license plate reading technology, LPR. But I feel that if we're going to put an LPR, maybe we should have something in there that can also look at what the traffic is like. Last thing is, I know along Kaiser Drive, there's a road diet. I mean, we've actually extended out the sidewalks. We've kind of narrowed it at the intersections, but that actually creates a bigger problem because now people are much closer to the cars when the cars are, you know, going at high speed around that restricted, restricted way, and then they see at the last minute that, oh, my goodness, it's actually a smaller, a smaller street than, you know, I expected. And then now you've got people that are really close to the cars as they're still going very fast into the restricted, restricted ways. I kind of believe that those, there must be another way to, you know, keep people away from the edges as they're extending out into the streets and slow people down. I almost feel that there should be, you should keep the people stopped where the normal sidewalks would be, and then, you know, if there's going to be a restriction of any kind, I don't want people waiting there as cars are coming around because I don't believe that slows down the cars. I also, you know, I know that people don't like speed bumps. Councilmember Jane was talking about speed bumps. I think that speed bumps do slow things, slow things down, and people who've gone through a speed bump at high speed, you know, probably won't do that again. I think at some point, I would like it not to impede public safety, and I think that Councilmember Jane was asking about something, you know, improvements there, but again, I think that all things should be on the table when we're considering safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you. It's so nice to see so many of you. It makes me think of B-PAC, and I do miss you all, I will say that. Obviously, this is very near and dear to my heart. We've worked a lot on this. When you mentioned the toolbox, you listed for each one of those possibilities, but I was wondering what criteria you would use? Is it specific to something, or is there a statistically best situation given, given different possibilities? Because we know we have different tools on our toolbox. I wondered what criteria you were using. Also, when I look at the map on page six of the report, and it shows different hotspots, and I remember noticing this when we first looked at it, that our state highway, El Camino, and our four county expressways, Lawrence Expressway, San Tomas, Montague, and Central are, especially those intersections, those are considered hotspots. But when I go down to page 24 of the report, I find something that doesn't quite make as much sense statistically to me, so I want to understand. It says, the majority of, this is at the top of page 24, "The majority of collisions during the study period occurred on city-owned and maintained facilities as seen in Figure Five. Collisions on county expressways accounted for approximately 15% of collisions, while collisions along state-maintained facilities, El Camino, accounted for only 10%." So I wanted to understand that. We know that Monroe is a concern, obviously. We've been very, very concerned about that. So the council, over the past couple of years, has approved a plan for Prun Ridge, one for Benton, and one for Monroe. If we pass this Vision Zero, because the concern is, those have been passed, but we don't have the funding to do those plans, would this help us with this, is what I want to understand, because those are already approved. When we talk about the speed humps and bumps, Briarwood neighbors who begged us for this many years ago, every time I go to any of their neighborhood activities, they hug me and thank me because they said it has made such a difference for their neighborhood, and they truly appreciate it. Also, Cabrillo, right there at Briarwood, at the intersection where we have put a stop sign, the neighbors on Cabrillo are telling me that really helps with people coming off Lawrence Expressway going very, very fast, or people trying to get to the light, and that stop sign has made a difference, and they are, once again, I got great big hugs. That was very nice. Now, when we talk about enforcement, that obviously will come from our police officers. In the past, cameras have been, I'll put it this way, lawyers have fought against that, saying that someone should be able to fight against someone seeing them, and cameras are not as well, not the best way to give a traffic infraction. Because it's hard to see the driver. I've always wondered, could we go to, the car gets the infraction, not the driver, and especially with us having a Waymo, we know that they are driving in our city, and that's a car without a driver. I'm wondering why we do not go after the car or whoever it's registered to instead of the driver? It would also make someone very careful about who they let take their vehicle. Also, years ago, I remember showing a lot of data that left-lagging lights seem to be very, very helpful, and the idea was to let the through traffic go and then allow left turners, but, and they've done this in downtown San Jose, where they allow left-hand turn unprotected when there's no oncoming traffic. It's with a yellow light flashing, and then it goes to protected only if cars are still waiting in that lane. And I know many times I have sat, not happy, but sat at a stoplight where there's no oncoming traffic. I could have turned left, but the light is red, so I do not. And then about the time cars come up is when it changes for a protected light for me, and especially during, quote, "off hours." So I've wondered if we've looked at that because I knew we, now we have a new system that allows us to adjust better. So that was, those were my specific questions that I did not hear specifically. Oh, yes, I did ask about, I wanted to know if that, those approvals, if we'd be able to get some funding for those that we have approved. Thank you.
Okay, that's it for the council, but in, because of time, I'm going to actually go to the public. I have three public members at least that want to speak, so at least we can get all the questions in. We do have another close, we have, I keep saying closed session, study session item as well that we have to get through, so I want to make sure I get to the public. So we're going to start with Akos. Come forward, please.
Welcome. With me is Ken Kurz.
He's on separately.
I'd like to yield my time to Akos. How many minutes do we get?
Two each, so that's four minutes. We can start all over. Thank you.
Ken Kurz is a longtime Expressway user. I have a, I have a display. The pedestrian maps shown are from Vision Zero. I added the circles. All pedestrian crashes on expressways were at intersections, red and blue circles, so none were in bike lanes or on sidewalks. Blue circles are the pedestrian's fault described below right on the map. The red circles are not. Vision Zero maps show intersections with KSI for crossing, but does not show whether the pedestrian was crossing the expressway or crossing the intersecting street. The crash spreadsheet would, but staff would not give me a copy. Next slide. However, San Jose staff did. I looked at the most-used expressway by pedestrians, Capital, and their crash spreadsheet shows the following pedestrian KSI. 19 for crossing Capital Expressway, that's 11-year data. Zero for crossing intersecting streets along Capital, and zero on sidewalks, paths, bike lanes, and bus stops along Capital. In fact, all expressways in San Jose, 23 miles total, and in Santa Clara, had zero KSI on sidewalks, paths, bike lanes, and bus stops. Vision Zero is the proof. County highway staff has conflated the many expressway crossing crashes despite pedestrians allowed to cross with zero expressway crashes on sidewalks, paths, bike lanes, and bus stops to try to eliminate all bike lanes in 2025. They tried to eliminate all sidewalks in the 2008 County Expressway Plan. Highway staff lost all BOS votes. Next slide. Both Vision Zero Santa Clara and San Jose show that expressways are the safest roads to walk along with zero crashes. Logic explains why. Expressways have 1/5 as many intersections per mile, the main source of crashes, 1/100 the driveways, bike lanes and/or sidewalks, unlike De La Cruz Boulevard, shown where pedestrians use a vehicular traffic lane and the speed limit is 40. Next slide. Example of a detour, red route with a double crossing of San Tomas Expressway, forced by prohibiting the shortest route, green. Another example, the pedestrians prohibited signs on San Tomas bike lanes, green route, forced people to use the next bridge to cross the railroad, Scott Boulevard. This added a one-mile red route, one-mile walk, and a double crossing of the expressway. Today, people use the Creek Trail. The remaining pedestrians prohibited signs mislead drivers to not expect pedestrians to be on the road. to not expect pedestrians to be on the road, thus further increasing crossing crashes. The BOS approved guide signs, not pedestrians prohibited signs. To solve a danger, you need to know the cause. Vision Zero's detailed crash data needs to be released. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a phone number, last four digits, 1-5-1-8, online. Unmute yourself, please. 1-5-1-8. There you go.
Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
This is Betsy Magus. I'm a member of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, speaking tonight for myself. Thank you to the staff for this effort, and to all of the council members who have clearly done your homework on this policy. Education and enforcement can help, but engineering is likely to make the biggest difference. Education tends to be most effective if there's something new. Nagging people to drive slower doesn't work. People drive as fast as they feel like they can go, and making streets actually slower usually means changing the street itself. Some of the engineering is going to be challenging. Carving out space for a bike lane on a road that's already been allocated entirely to moving and storing cars can be a tough sell. Cost savings can come by incorporating changes in repaving and other maintenance projects. Our complete streets policy and various county and regional funding sources already require improvements to pedestrian and bicycle facilities in conjunction with pavement rehabilitation. And staff have been doing a good job of preparing to have bikeway studies and other plans lined up ahead of such prospective repairs. We now have eight such studies approved, of which one, Lafayette, is currently making progress toward a build. Another plan on the website doesn't keep anyone safer. It doesn't reduce VMT, or advance our climate plans, or improve our safety. For Vision Zero to work, we have to adopt this plan, and we also have to commit and do something about it, both to improve the streets, and to continue to scrutinize collisions that occur, and evaluate the efficacy of the responses. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Next, we have Gavin. Go ahead, Gavin. You're online. Unmute yourself. There you go.
Hello, I'm Gavin Ockmeyer. I live in Rivermark. I'll start by thanking the staff for this report, and particularly for pointing out the immediate actions available to the city. The most important part of Vision Zero is the vision, and a whole hard commitment to that vision at all levels, political and bureaucratic. Vision Zero is talking about people, often kids, dying multiple times a year, in a way that we know is preventable. Vision Zero is acknowledging that a key reason of the state and our government is to guarantee the safety of the citizens, and the most effective improvement to public safety in Santa Clara today is to make our streets safer. We know how, as you've referenced, there are other cities in America who have done this. There are cities nearby who are making improvements. There are other countries that have hit zero. We can do it, and we need to. These changes, we need to make some of these changes now. We need to build as soon as we can, especially when we have the plans approved. We've spent a lot of money and time getting the outreach, making sure council has approval of these plans. I think it's time to build many of them. They're on this network. We know they're important. As Betsy said, many of these streets are going to be undergoing 20- or 30-year repavement projects anyway. Anytime we approach those, for low additional marginal cost, we can make these streets, and should make these streets safer. What we need out of council here is this commitment, and to drive staff towards that commitment. Thank you.
Thank you, Gavin. Next, we have Kathy. Go ahead, Kathy.
Hi, this is Mark Kelsey. I'm speaking with my wife Kathy here as well. I applaud the Vision Zero project. I think it brings needed urgency to the, to the importance of pedestrian and safety, and traffic safety in our, in our neighborhoods. But I would urge the council to also consider taking immediate steps and not waiting for any studies to be completed on a couple of issues. First of all is the implementation of the state-mandated daylight parking law, which prohibits parking within 20 feet of an intersection. That improves pedestrian safety, and it also improves driver's safety, as there's better visibility at intersections. Second is parking enforcement. Parking enforcement is woefully underfunded in the city. I could write parking tickets all day if you hired me just around the, I live in the old Quad neighborhood, around the university, and I could certainly write parking tickets all day, and I seldom see parking enforcement. It will do very little good to, to implement the daylight law that the city has implemented if we don't have parking enforcement. Recently, a police officer declined to cite a car parked next to a fire hydrant. I think there's opportunity for improvement. And third, I would definitely urge the updating of the traffic calming policies. When I requested traffic calming in a neighborhood street, I was referred to that 1999 policy, but was told that there's no funding for improvements that the city traffic engineering department recognized were needed. So there are, there are steps that the council could take immediately to provide funding for these improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other members of the public that would like to speak on this issue? Okay, seeing none. I had one follow-up question as well to add to your list. Knowing that we're going to start implementing the 15 mile-per-hour zone around the schools, how is that, how does that play into this at all? And was that taken into consideration? I think, I think our signs are up, or they're coming up, or at least maybe I saw a virtual sign online that, that they were coming. But, but, I mean, I'm happy to see that, but it should be around every school in Santa Clara. Is it 15 miles per hour?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, in the interest of time-
Yeah, so tell me now how we're going to do this.
We can come back with written responses. This was a study session for presentation, council feedback, and public feedback. We have that. I think, so that we can get to the next item, staff can come back with written responses. And the next time this item comes to you, we can give you a high-level update on those as well.
Thank you, and I appreciate it. I know there's quite a few questions and comments, so thank you so much. All right, Councilmember Jane.
How is the public going to see those written responses?
We can provide them on a future city council agenda as supplemental information.
Thank you.
That's important, yeah.
And, and put them on the Vision Zero website.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go, thank you so much for, for all the report. It was pretty, pretty amazing and complete. Item number one, be study session on pedestrian access on county expressways. City manager.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. As you noted, this is an item on pedestrian access on county expressways. The council may remember, in November, a member of the public requested that the city repeal Resolution 5603 related to pedestrian restrictions on portions of Lawrence and San Tomas expressways. Staff has coordinated with the resident, the county of Santa Clara, our police department, as well as the city attorney's office on this item. Steve Chan, our transportation manager for the Public Works Department, will provide a brief presentation related to the city's role in approving pedestrian restrictions on county expressways, past actions taken under this authority, opinions on the city's responsibilities related to pedestrian access on expressways, and then finally recommend its next steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmember. Steve Chan, Transportation Manager. Tonight, we also have Chris Lamb, County Roads and Airport Deputy Director, here to answer any question after the presentation I will be presenting. For the agenda for this item, we're going to go over the background under request, operation and enforcement, regulation on the expressway, past council action on this matter, enforcement collision history, safety consideration for repeal, and then finally staff recommendation. Mr. Akos Soboslay requested a repeal of Resolutions 5603, which prohibits pedestrian on portion of Lawrence Expressway and San Tomas Expressway. He believes that prohibition is unnecessary, and that pedestrians should be allowed to walk on the expressway regardless of sidewalk availability. County Roads and Airport operates, maintains, expressway in the county, which also includes management of pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicle traffic. Santa Clara Police Department handles traffic enforcement and investigation on expressway within the city's limit. Both the county and the city have jurisdiction over pedestrian usage on the expressway, as defined in California Vehicle Code 21960. County and city may restrict pedestrian use of the expressway, specifically to the city's Resolution 5603 identifies area of pedestrian restriction on the San Tomas and Lawrence Expressway. In June 2006, City Council reviewed a earlier petition from Mr. Soboslay to repeal Resolution 5603. Council action from 2006 at that time include the following: Request the county to lead pedestrian prohibition where appropriate. Repeal the city's Resolution 5603 once the county adopts updated pedestrian prohibition ordinance. And then finally, request the county to develop a program and funding to expand sidewalk on the expressway. This map shows the pedestrian restriction on Lawrence Expressway from Cabrillo to the right of your page, to Stevens Creek to the left of your page. The red and blue lines indicate the restriction segment of Lawrence Expressway, and then the green line shows the sidewalk or trail facility where pedestrian can be accommodated. Specifically to the restriction, it's enforceable only when signs are posted and where there are no sidewalks. And this is a map showing pedestrian restriction on San Tomas Expressway, from Walsh Avenue, located on the right of the page, to Stevens Creek Boulevard to the left of the page. Again, restriction is enforceable only where signs are posted and where there are no sidewalks. As stated, county posts pedestrian prohibition signs where restriction applies and where sidewalks are absent. County is also installing new guidance signs directing pedestrian to alternative routes where sidewalk are missing on the expressway. And here are two photos of the prohibition, pedestrian prohibition signage on San Tomas Expressway. To your left is an image of Walsh and San Tomas. Clearly, there is no sidewalk, narrow shoulder, a steep bank curb return behind the curb area. And on the right image is San Tomas and Monroe, again, narrow, narrow shoulder, a overgrown area behind the curb line. And here is an image of some of the new guidance signage being installed by the county, directing pedestrian to Creek, San Tomas Aquino Creek Trail, where there is pedestrian facility directing away from the side of the expressway, San Tomas Expressway, where there is no sidewalk. In terms of enforcement and collision, there has been about 2,000 citation issued between 2023 to 2025. No citation were related to violation by pedestrian. There have been 800 collision between 2022 to 2024. 18 collision involved pedestrian, and 17 of those are at intersections. Safety consideration for repeal. Area without sidewalk do not comply with ADA and pedestrian design standard. There are few light posts along expressway that limits nighttime visibility. Debris, uneven surfaces, and drainage structure create walking hazard along expressway shoulders. Walking on shoulders can conflict with high-speed traffic, disabled vehicle, and maintenance activity. And lastly, restricting pedestrian access may mitigate liability from unsafe condition where there are no sidewalks. For staff's recommendation, we recommend aligning with City Council's 2006 directions. County to lead pedestrian prohibition ordinance where appropriate. Repeal the city's, city, repeal the city's Resolution 5603 when the county adopt ordinance modifying pedestrian prohibition. Support the recently adopted county active transportation plan to enhance and, to enhance pedestrian and bike facility on the expressway. And lastly, the city continue to have development construct new sidewalk where the project abuts expressway. This concludes my presentation. I am happy to answer any question you may have.
Thank you so much. I have a few from the council. We'll start with Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you. My biggest question is, I heard that we were talking about just pedestrian at this point, but then you mentioned both pedestrian and bicycle. So I want to make certain, what, what the prohibition, if I understand, is for pedestrians. And then you mentioned bicycling right at the end, so I wanted to make certain I understood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jane.
Yeah, I actually very, in fact, today, I drove along San Tomas, and I see that in front of Nvidia, there's a sidewalk there. And then, as one of your pictures show, that as you go across at Walsh, as you go across that overcrossing of the railroad tracks, there is a shoulder there, but there's no sidewalk there, and there is a sign, as you show, saying no pedestrians. And my question is, there's no sign saying no bicycles. What is the difference between bicycles and pedestrians? If it's dangerous for pedestrians, it should be dangerous for bicycles. Why are we not restricting bicycles? It doesn't, the consistency doesn't seem to be there. Now, is it because of ADA rules, where if you have, you're allowing pedestrians, then you have to meet ADA requirements, whereas you don't have ADA requirements for bicycles? So that the slope, the, the level of the slope, the grade, might be too high for, quote, pedestrians, which are actually wheelchairs, for ADA? So I'm, it just seems inconsistent, and as I drive along there, it's just broken up. There are sidewalks at Scott, there's a little sidewalk there, then it disappears. And then, in front of Nvidia, there's sidewalk appears, and it just like, I don't really understand why it's so broken up, and why there's no effort to, you know, make it contiguous. Mr. Sobos- Akos, Akos has told me that it's really, there's an effort to try to expand more lanes, and that's why we don't want to add pedestrian or bicycle infrastructure there, because the, the goal is to actually add more traffic lanes. So I'm trying to understand what the motivation is for having this thing being so broken up, and why, what the difference is between, there's signs for no pedestrians, but there's no signs saying no bicycles. So I'm trying to understand that. Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to go to the public now, so we can get those questions and comments as well. Akos, you're, you're up.
Akos Soboslay, the BOS has never enacted a- Akos Soboslay, the BOS has never enacted a pedestrian prohibition or a bicycle prohibition. So when staff keeps bringing this up, they want to muddy the issue. It's completely moot. They claim that pedestrians are not prohibited from using sidewalks. That's completely false if you match up the sidewalks where the pedestrians are prohibited. I can, if I, I don't have time to explain unless I'm given more time on why the prohibitions are on certain blocks and not on other blocks and this side of the road and on another side.
You know what? I'll go ahead and give you two more minutes so you can explain, since the reason we're here is because of you.
Okay. State law gave no authority to prohibit bicyclists and pedestrians from expressways. They only authorized prohibiting from freeways. Staff took the definition of freeway, one of the requirements of a freeway is all right or easement of access must be required. That means 100% of property owners along the freeway must have signed a contract that they will never, ever walk or bike or drive onto the expressway from their private property. Well, what city staff did was they claimed that every block is a completely separate and independent freeway from every other block. And then the staff claimed, city staff, that northbound lanes are a completely separate freeway from the southbound lanes. I'm talking about Lawrence Expressway. So wherever you have a driveway, that is a proof that the right of access is not required. So city staff, and that's the one thing we could agree on, so totally randomly, they removed pedestrians' prohibitions signs, and the city council repealed it, where there was a sidewalk in that block and on that side of the road. Well, there was a change in management at County Roads, and the new manager completely agree with me that that city staff idea is ludicrous. It's very dangerous because it forces pedestrians to go from one side of the road to the other needlessly, which is the most dangerous. So he ordered all pedestrians' prohibitive signs removed from Lawrence Expressway. So that's the reason there, that you have gaps. Then, it is, where do pedestrians walk on expressways if there's no sidewalk? They walk adjacent to the curb, the edge of pavement. They are always further away from bicyclists, from cars than the bicyclist, because most bicyclists ride near the solid line because it's safer, they're more visible, and less debris, less flat tires. Now, I'll continue with my regular speech. Staff completely ignored the council meeting of March 25. I quote the video after my speech. Mayor Gilmore said, "Can we by consensus refer this to staff?" Councilmember Suds said, "Yes." Then Mayor Gilmore said, "We are referring, so thank you." But staff dropped the matter. That is why I kept coming back to council. Staff also ignored the 2006 Council vote to, quote, "Take action," unquote, after the 2008 County Expressway Plan is approved. City staff never complied despite years of my reminders. That is because highway staff lost the vote to eliminate sidewalks on all expressways. Instead, the BOS approved sidewalks on expressways. Today, staff wants to continue prohibiting use of sidewalks and also bike lanes. The 2003 plan shown requires six-foot bike lanes for both pedestrians and bicyclists. Then you can see the title page, the city council endorsement, the width of the bike lane, and the pedestrian use, the sentence, "Shoulders or fast facilities can serve for occasional pedestrian use." Prohibitions are not based on logic, but history. Staff ignores the fact, completely ignored, that Montague and Central Expressways with the same bike lanes and some sidewalks are allowed by Santa Clara and all other cities. Sunwheel allows all expressways. Santa Clara prohibits bike lane and sidewalk use on Lawrence and Santa Tomas sporadically due to tactics of staff who, for decades, fought to oppose them. Please repeal this discriminatory, unjust, and dangerous Resolution 5603. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken, come up, please.
Yeah, hi. My name is Ken Kratz, and I'm a resident, and I'm retired City of Santa Clara Public Works Inspector, and I am on the city's Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and I'm also a member of the city's Vision Zero Working Group. Please repeal this Resolution 5603, a resolution prohibiting pedestrians on sections of Lawrence and Santa Tomas Expressway. According to the network screening tables in the draft Vision Zero Action Plan, there are very few problems along the expressways compared to other locations throughout the city, which are primarily located at intersections. There are fewer intersections and driveways along expressways, helping to make them safer than alternatives. I've lived next to expressways in my neighborhood for over 45 years, and I personally use the expressways for cycling and walking to nearby destinations, and I've seen other people use them now, and actually use areas where they've got it red, so they're actually using it. I have been walking and riding my bicycle for over 25 years along expressways, primarily Lawrence and Santa Tomas, to get to work here at City Hall, to go shopping for food, hardware, bike repairs, parts, and I go to the dentist, the bank, and I visit friends, and occasionally go to restaurants. I also walk on the new sidewalk along Lawrence Expressway to visit Kaiser Hospital. Using the expressways saves a lot of time to get to those destinations. My wife Diane also is interested in bicycle access to expressways and was also part of the effort to open the expressways to bicyclists. She won a court case after getting ticketed for riding on an expressway. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, I'm going to go back to staff, and I know we have our county roads person here, so. If we can get a response to these questions, and we literally have about 10 minutes max.
Okay. I'll try to go through this quickly.
No pressure.
Pedestrian prohibition, as Councilmember Hardy mentioned, why are we talking about bicycle? This is regarding pedestrian prohibition. Actually, there is no prohibition of bicycle traffic on the expressway right now. I only mention bicycle because the county adopted the Active Transportation Plan, which expands pedestrian and bicycle facility on the expressway. So I want to highlight, the interest is pedestrian access at this time. Regarding the piecemeal sidewalk near Nvidia on Santa Tomas Expressway, those sidewalks was constructed by projects, so they are not continuous, so they are kind of piecemeal on that section. Luckily, Nvidia is expanding, so that section on Santa Tomas south of Walsh should be expanded as well. In regard to bicycle and pedestrian consistency, similar to regular neighborhood street, we have bike lanes or where bicycle can travel on a vehicle lane. We don't encourage or generally permit pedestrian to walk on the roadway because the sidewalk is there. And generally, when we advertise that pedestrian can travel on a certain section of the roadway, we are considering all pedestrian of all ability, so able-bodied and pedestrian with disability. So that's why there's concern that expressway where there's no sidewalk, it does not accommodate pedestrian of all ability. In regards to the vehicle code in restriction, it's only enforceable when company signage is put in place. Where there is existing sidewalk, there's no pedestrian prohibition signage installed. Staff reviewed it, and we did not find any prohibition sign where there's existing sidewalk. There may be signage adjacent to Creek Trail, but that's to prohibit pedestrian from walking on the shoulder of the expressway, not from walking on the trail, Santa Tomas Aquino Creek Trail. In terms of Central and Montague Expressway, the city lifted pedestrian, bicycle, and motorcycle prohibition on Central Expressway in 1982. There was no staff report explaining the action of that time, possibly because, as Akos mentioned, it was tied to pass Vehicle Code 21960 that require full access right before restriction can be placed. However, that was changed by SB 1233 in 2004, which modified its vehicle code to allow restriction even without full access right. And for Montague Expressway, there are sidewalk there at this time, but that expressway was built in the mid to late 1970s and was not part of the original 1966 expressway prohibition. And moving forward from 2006, the city council's direction has been for the county to lead pedestrian prohibition effort where appropriate. I think that's the question I have written down. Any additional input from Chris Lamb, Roads and Airport?
Thank you, Steve, and thank you, Mayor and City Council, for having me here tonight. You know, I think the County Roads and Airport's Department has a longstanding and very positive relationship with the City of Santa Clara Public Works Department, so we definitely work hand in hand and are in regular communication on all these issues regarding expressways through the City of Santa Clara. I think there were clearly some actions taken in 2006 that required some follow-up, that the county is committed to continuing those efforts today. Additionally, as Steve mentioned, the county adopted its first active transportation plan earlier this year in June. The vision of that active transportation plan, as it relates to the county expressway system, foresees a Class 1 bike path built on every expressway in the county. That's a large endeavor, as you can imagine. The county has really one segment that has that in place, that's in Santa Clara, that was through a partnership with the City of Santa Clara along the Santa Tomas Aquino Creek Trail. There's other projects that have funding assigned to them, and the county is actively looking for grant funds for a number of studies and eventual implementation of those projects. But overall, the county is in support of those recommendations that were made by Mr. Chan in terms of regarding this discussion tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Jane, you have a question?
Yeah. I had a question regarding the comment that, you know, we have bike lanes in the street, and then we have sidewalks, and, you know, bikes are supposed to be on the street, pedestrians on the sidewalk, but we have runners that run on our streets because it's smoother and safer for them for ankle twists and, you know, debris from plants and everything. So we have many, many people that run on our streets. I don't believe they can get ticketed for that. Is that correct?
Not that I'm aware of. Again, I think the highlight is the able-bodied runner on the street. You know, they could definitely, if they're able, to be running on the street on the shoulder side. But I think the emphasis I'm trying to make is that if we open up to pedestrian travel, I think we should consider pedestrian of all abilities is, you know, the standard of care that the city staff would recommend.
Well, that will be essentially impossible when you have big overpasses where the grade is just not the same. So I don't see how, really what we want to do is, we just don't want people to get ticketed for walking on the expressways. There's no reason for people to be ticketed for walking on expressways.
And I'd like to, sorry.
City, I'm going to go to the city manager for that.
If it is prohibited from walking on the expressways, we would need additional legal analysis and an opinion from the police department if the council wanted to give direction for, to the city to not ticket if someone was violating the law, so.
That's what I would like.
That's another conversation. So seeing nothing else and seeing we're going to be starting our other council meeting in six minutes, thank you so much. I think, city manager, can you tell us our next steps?
This meeting was scheduled at the request of the city council due to the member of the public's comment. If there is no action or direction from the city council, staff would consider this item closed, so we're happy to take any direction that the council will give.
Okay. Oh, now lights are on. We have like a minute, so Councilmember Park and then Councilmember Jane again.
Again, we had a number of people who, to take the bicycle lanes along Martin and Walsh, and I told them, well, here's the bike plan, because we talked about this last year or some time ago. And it turns out that the bike lanes are there, are part of the way as well. It's not just the sidewalks. There's no, the bike lanes are there partway along the paths that we tell people to use. And I said, well, I'm sure it's because we have not actually completed those yet. We have not completed the work that we told staff that we wanted done to make those official bikeways. But again, this is one of the problems. One of the problems is it's not just along the streets, it's not just the sidewalks, it's the bikeway paths as well. If you want to get from, for example, De La Cruz over to Lafayette or even further down.
We're talking about expressways.
That's true, that's true. But I'm saying that, and that, again, is only required because they cannot take the expressways to go down. I would like to move that we continue this item rather than simply close it. Is there a way to continue this? Because I feel like there's a lot of other things that I would like to ask that we are not going to have time for right now, but I would like to make a motion to continue this item.
Councilmember Jane?
I also don't want to just close this item. There's some work that staff could do on this, and I'd like for staff to come back to us.
Yes.
If, maybe you can articulate what other work you want staff to do on this. That would be helpful to the staff, I think.
I expressed that already. That would be, what would be the implications of not ticketing, having a policy of not ticketing or have very zero or minimal fines for something like this? Just posting a sign, no pedestrians. You know, like, when you violate littering, they tell you it's a minimum, you know, $400 fine if you run a red light, there's a minimum fine. There's no minimum fine for walking on an expressway.
Chief, do you have some comments on this?
Just very briefly, I know we're times of the essence. The challenge we face in that, Councilmember, is we'd be running up against, say, the vehicle codes, that's a state mandate, and we wouldn't have the authority to disregard a validly passed law and not cite permanently. We have independent discretion, case by case, but to blanketly disregard it, it was not within our authority, so that'd be the challenge.
That's why I asked what specifically we're looking at for more staff work.
Who sets the fine levels? I mean, if we made the fine $10, could we set that? Could we set the, could the council set the fine to $10?
City manager, do you want to answer this? And I'm ready for us to move on. We have a council meeting that's going to start. If you want to continue by sending your questions to the city manager, I think that is appropriate to follow up on this? Yes?
Sure. We'll write a memo to the city council to answer the specific question of who has the authority to lower fines for walking on the expressway.
Right, because it is county. Okay? All right. Thank you. Thank you all for this.
Clarity, I want a clarification, which is, again, I don't want this to be closed and come back with a report. I want there to be additional discussion. I believe if we need to, I'll make a motion to continue this item.
You did, but nobody seconded it.
There's a second.
And continue second for what in particular?
So I'm going to say I will leave it to staff to, you know, if they want to come back with the reports, the answers to some of these things here, but I would like to come back to a council meeting where where we can continue this discussion, continue to have input, and talk about possibilities.
All right. There's a motion second to continue to some unknown time for unknown issues.
I'll give staff time, but I can... I'll state next meeting if you want to.
Just to clarify, in case the measure passes, I do think we need explicit...
I think so, too.
Direction. I've heard a number of individual desires from council. We have stated that we will come back with a memo on the authority to lower fines for walking on the expressway. Councilmember Park mentioned that staff can do additional work on this. We would need additional clarification on what is being requested from staff to come back with so that we know how to prepare.
Because if I were to add, I would say that councilmember Jane's questions about, you know, who can do fines, who can do, you know, can council set fines? I think that would be fine. But again, this is one of those things where I have additional potential questions that may lead to other actions, and I would like to be able to ask those. I'd like to be able to continue this discussion, even if there isn't additional staff work that is prescribed by, you know...
I'm going to interject here because why don't you submit your questions to the staff? Because you can't clearly articulate what they are right now.
Oh, but the point is...
So our staff is very busy right now. So if you want to articulate your questions, put them in writing and send them to the city manager and city attorney, and then we can deal with them at that time. But a continuance, just for the sake of a continuance without clear direction, it doesn't make sense and makes our staff work on something they're not quite clear on what they should work on. And we need to move on. So let's vote on this continuance. I'm not supporting it. I think that you should put your questions, whatever they are, your comments specifically, and send them to staff. City attorney?
As a second, I had a comment.
No, I'm not. To the city attorney.
I had no additional comment, mayors. I would wait for the vote on this.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Jane, quickly, and then we're going to vote.
I would like to continue it till after FIFA.
After FIFA for a year?
Not a year.
Okay. Okay, July of 2026. That doesn't make any sense. All right. City Assistant City Clerk, we have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. All right, that passes four to two. We'll see this item next July 2026. And hopefully, you can clearly articulate what you want the staff to work on prior to then.
Mayor.
Thank you. Yes.
Just want to note that this item will likely come up again when we bring back additional information on Vision Zero, which is actually planned for before July 2026.
But the motion was after FIFA. Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. We're going to take a seven-minute break, and we'll be back. Could I ask everyone to take their seats, please? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Santa Clara City Council Stadium Authority meeting. Could you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a Statement of Values?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation undergone indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
As we gather, we humbly seek blessings upon this meeting. May we act with strength, courage, and will to perform our obligations and duties to our people with justice to all. Let us seek wisdom so we may act in the best interest of our people, our neighbors, and our country. All this we ask so we may serve our community with fairness and respect, putting their needs before all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Assistant City Clerk?
Councilmember, Board Member Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember, Board Member Shaw Hall.
Present.
Councilmember, Board Member Hardy.
Present.
Councilmember, Board Member Park.
Here.
Councilmember, Board Member Jane.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Cox.
Here.
And Mayor and Chair Gilmore.
Here.
Thank you. The AB 23 announcement, members of the Santa Clara Stadium Authority, Sports and Open Space Authority, and Housing Authority are entitled to receive $30 for each attended meeting. Statement of Behavioral Standards, the City of Santa Clara has adopted a Code of Ethics and Values and Behavioral Standards for public meetings to promote and maintain the highest levels of conduct. This includes mutual respect, robust discussion, and allowing city business to be done in an efficient and consistent manner. Please note that as the presiding officer, the mayor's and chair's direction in matters of process and decorum should be followed, and that use of the gavel indicates all conversations must conclude, and everyone in attendance should come to order and attention. Welcome and thank you for your participation. For those joining us this evening in the capacity as a registered lobbyist, we ask you to please identify yourself as such and disclose the clients and/or organizations that you represent. This is pursuant to City Code Section 2.155.110. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. For today's meeting, the council's back in person and is conducting its meeting in a hybrid manner. The public is welcome to attend in person, and the city continues to use a Zoom feature to allow participation from your home or office. Members of the public can still join via the link and/or call into the Zoom meeting phone number shown on the screen now. If you would like to speak on an agenda item or during public presentations, please raise your hand on the Zoom application or press star nine on your phone. Please only raise your hand while the item you're seeking to speak on is presented. Staff will enter your name or the last four digits of your phone number, and I will call on you to speak. As a friendly reminder, members of the public have two minutes to speak on an agenda item and three minutes on public presentations, and those are reserved for topics that are not on the agenda. Prior to each agenda item, staff will lower your hand to ensure members of the public are seeking to speak on the appropriate item. So let's move on now to the council agenda. We have reports of action taken in closed session. I think we have a report from last meeting. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Council did meet in closed session at our last meeting on November 10. You accompanied me, Madam Mayor, to report out on that to the empty chambers, but as is our practice, we also like to report out at a live meeting where it's being recorded. So that's what I'll be doing here today. Council met in closed session on three items. Item 1A was conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, both exposure to litigation and initiation of litigation. Action was taken by the city council in that matter to authorize participation in litigation. The particulars of this action, including the named defendants, will be disclosed once the participation has been initiated to any person upon inquiry. Council also met on item 1B, conference with labor negotiators. Included in that was discussions regarding Unit 1, Unit 3, Unit 4, and Unit 9A. However, there was no reportable action. Finally, Mayor and public on item 1C, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, City of Santa Clara versus Lingfelter, as identified on that agenda. Council did take action to ratify the initiation of litigation in that case by a five-zero vote with two members absent. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, City Attorney. Our next item is continuances, exceptions, and reconsideration. We have one item, which is item number five, public hearing, action on a vesting tentative map for a proposed common interest development of six single-family housing units located at 4503 Cheney Street. That was continued, and there's going to be a recommendation when the item comes up to continue to December 16. But just wanting to know, would anyone like to speak on that continuance right now? Any member of the public? All right, seeing none, do we have any other continuances, exceptions, or reconsiderations? Staff, council, public? Okay, seeing none. We're going to move on to our first and only special order of business this evening. For special order of business tonight, the City of Santa Clara commends the Santa Clara Swim Club in honor of their gold medal club recognition. Founded in 1951 by legendary coach George Haynes, the Santa Clara Swim Club has carved its name in aquatic history, beginning with just 13 swimmers at a Santa Clara High School Pool dedication. Today, the club provides a variety of programs for the community, including programs for persons with disabilities and Olympic aspirants. The Santa Clara Swim Club was recently recognized as a 2025-2026 Gold Medal Club by USA Swimming for its outstanding performance. This is an incredible achievement, as only the top 20 teams in the entire country received this honor. The Club Excellence Program administered by USA Swimming is a program that identifies and recognizes USA Swimming member clubs for its commitment to performance excellence. This recognition is a testament to the dedication and excellence of Coach Kevin Zacher, his staff, and all the swimmers who continue to represent Santa Clara with pride. They are truly embodying what our city stands for: commitment, community, and excellence. I now would like to invite Coach Kevin Zacher to the podium to share a few more words about Santa Clara Swim Club. Kevin and friends. Yes. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As you said, we were named a gold medal club by USA Swimming, one of the top 20 in the country, out of nearly 3,000 clubs like ours across the entire United States. So pretty prestigious to be named as a gold medal club. We're really proud of it. That's due to the hard work of our staff, and you said, but these guys, these kids do tremendous work. As you know, we've been out of the pool for a while, and they persevere. Last year, we had a schedule where they had to swim every single morning during the week, 5:30 to 7:30, five days a week, and still go to school and do all the things that kids need to do. But tremendous work ethic from these kids. They work really hard. I want to point out, highlight a couple of kids. Sharif, raise your hand. Sharif represented the United States at the Junior World Championships in Romania this past August.
Wow. Give him a round of applause.
Mia Su is part of the national junior team, so she's one of the top five in her event, in her best event in the entire country, 18 and under swimmers. And then Isabel Wu, Violet Rutter, Aya Gillis-Pade, raise your hand. They just, either last year or this year, attended the National Select Camp in Colorado Springs for kids that are on track to hopefully someday represent the United States. So. And I will say, you mentioned that we've got, you know, obviously, we have kids that are aspiring to be elite, that are elite-level swimmers and high ends, but we have programs that meet the needs of many different constituents for the community, and most of these kids started in a learn-to-swim program, much like we provide. So they start little, they love swimming, they keep going, and then this is what they can do. So we're really proud of them. I do want to say, a lot of the work that these kids have done over the years, it didn't just happen in the last two years. It happened swimming at the ISC when they were young, growing up, swimming at the ISC, loving being a part of that pool, being a part of that community. And on that note, I really want to give a shout out to Damon and his team, Carolyn and Kim Castro. We had a meeting this morning on some updates with the project, and we're really looking forward to that being done. So thank you for this recognition. Thank you for all your support. We really appreciate it. We would not be where we are without the city's support. So thank you.
Well, thank you for what you've done. Let's also give a round of applause to their parents, family, friends, and everyone who supports them. We know it takes a village to get this done, and I think these honors are especially poignant because this last couple of years has been very challenging for the Santa Clara Swim Club. And to be honored in this way after all of these challenges that we're still going through is completely, I mean, it's so admirable. So thank you for your patience with us, and it's going to get done, and it's going to be beautiful when it's done, and there'll be many, many more. So we don't really quite have Olympic gold medals, but we have our Santa Clara version of them, so we'd like to pass those out, invite them up, and then give you this proclamation, and then take a photo with the city council, so.
Oh, there we go.
All right. Next item we have is a consent calendar. All items are approved with one motion unless an item is pulled for discussion. Do we have any council comments? Council, Vice Mayor Cox?
I'd like to pull item 3L, which is action on award of contracts for as-needed engineering support services to Electrical Power Engineers LLC, Flynn Resource Consultants, Handron Engineering, Lidos Engineering LLC, and Power Tech Engineers, Inc., with an aggregate maximum compensation not to exceed $15 million, inclusive of option year to be funded from the Electrical Utility Fund and the Electric Utility Capital Fund.
Thank you, and thank you for reading it. Councilmember Jane?
Yes, I will be recusing from item 3G, action on historical preservation agreement, Mills Act, contract for 1458 Lexington Street. The property search shows a potential conflict of interest, being that this is 980 feet from my home.
All right. Anyone else? Any member of the public? All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, noting the one-pulled item 3L and the abstention forum, Councilmember Jane? Sorry, recusal for Councilmember Jane.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Motion by Councilmember Chahal, second by Councilmember Gonzalez.
Motion on the floor is approve the balance of the consent calendar.
Please register your vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on, I believe, is public presentations. Yes, we have public presentations, and those are reserved for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any public presentations? Assistant City Clerk?
Yes, we have our first speaker, Stephen Swanson.
Stephen, come forward, please. Welcome. Could you start again, please? Could we start his time again, please? The microphone wasn't on, so those at home would not be able to hear you.
Yeah, since I don't have much time, I'm going to make it quick.
No, go ahead. We'll restart it.
2008 to 2013. I experienced a hostile work environment, work environment, working for the Santa Clara Police Department. I was able to see the PD psychologist, Steve Dzolzul, all the way up until the time I retired. Okay? Nobody helped me with my workman's comp, with my PTSD, because I thought that was all military. Well, it's not. My PTSD is from the damage down here. Well, the other problem is, we got another city employee that's leaving the city because the HR department can't even do a good investigation, so I want the chief in the police department to investigate the building maintenance hostile work environment. I was a witness, and I was never called, and they found it unfounded. Okay? I'm not happy about hostile work environments. Okay? We need to fix that. Your HR's in very much trouble, because I just filed the workman's comp because they triggered me over my pay. You guys can't go around changing somebody's pay without notifying them. I didn't get notified. That's illegal. But HR says it's okay, and then I got a letter from HR that says they can't pay for my medical because CalPur says so. Well, under the workman's comp, they do. Okay? And then also, in 2008, when I hurt my back in 2007, December, I was on vacation, right? I'm seeing a PD psychologist, I'm seeing a VA psychologist, I'm seeing a Kaiser psychologist, psychiatrist, okay? At the same time, I'm on vacation because my back, I ran out of sick time. Paul Kaufman does a police investigation on me. My understanding is, if you're under investigation, you're supposed to be put on paid administrative leave. I wasn't. A lot of bad things happened to me, and nobody fixed anything. And I'd like to know why. Okay? There's an FBI report floating around in the city, because the FBI ended up investigating mine because of my ex-wife. She has security credentials after yin yang. So the FBI, every five years, so in 2013, they came in. They took my neighbor, nailed him down at the Santa Clara Police Station. He was told to sell his house and move. Captain Kaufman was retired. My boss was retired, all in 2013. Katie Tucker. I retired in 2014 because I couldn't work anymore. I was so beat. Okay? And then you guys offered me a part-time job, and I said, fine, as long as I don't work for the Santa Clara Police Department, I'll do work over there, but I don't work for them anymore, ever. And here we are. I'm no longer working for the City of Santa Clara because HR can't even fix my pay. They say either work for $60 an hour or tough. Well, now you guys are going to probably have to spend $37,000 to do EOC, when if you paid me $100 an hour, that's 370 hours of my time, which equals six months. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we can't take any action up here. We don't know the particulars of your case, but the city manager has heard them and the city attorney. So can you please follow up with this gentleman? Well, he will this time. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right. I saw someone else. Are they off now? Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to please come forward?
Thank you very much. Am I ready to go? Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Okay, so I've submitted some documentation to the council. I'm going to just go over the high points because it's a little long. So I'm following up on a code enforcement complaint that I submitted November 7th, 2025, regarding Summerwood Apartments located at 444 Saratoga Avenue in Santa Clara, California, regarding multiple violations of California Civil and Vehicle Codes specifically related to unlawful enforcement of a lease addendum, coercive contract practices, and interference with tenants' rights regarding assigned and unassigned parking. Excrevence extends to the entire community of Summerwood Apartments, which is currently managed by Interstate Equities Corporation. The residents of Summerwood Apartment are in opposition to the unethical and unlawful practice of forced lease addendums, which is evidenced by the petition signed by 50 leaseholders in Exhibit D of this documentation. I'm just going to go through the document real quick here to give you an idea of what's going on. Okay, so we had a forced signature of lease addendum restricting parking access with economic duress as a penalty. On October 14, 2025, all tenants were notified by email that vehicles without parking permits would be subject to towing after October 31, 2025. Residents were told to collect parking passes from the office as soon as possible, and they needed to provide their driver's license and registration information to be eligible. When residents went to the office to obtain their permits, they were required to sign a new parking lease addendum as a condition of receiving the permit, even for parking spaces they already assigned and paid for under their current existing lease agreements. This was not indicated in the email we received, but rather told to the residents when they showed up. Without signing, tenants were denied their permit and told they would be towed from their assigned spaces. The new addendum imposed material changes as listed in the document I provided. A new $100 fee for previously unassigned uncovered parking spaces, so that leaseholders with two-bedroom units with one assigned space to their unit were forced to pay an additional $100 for an uncovered parking space mid-lease if two vehicles were owned by the leaseholders. This is a de facto rent increase of $100 per month enforced by the landlord mid-lease. Authorization power by the tenant over the use of paid parking spaces was revoked by the landlord, no longer allowing the tenants to authorize or deauthorize anyone to park in their paid parking spaces. All use of personal paid and unassigned spaces for guest parking was completely prohibited, and only vehicles listed on the lease are allowed to be parked in any spaces at all. Landlord retained unilateral power to tow vehicles without notifying the leaseholder of towing a vehicle from their space. We believe this to be illegal under California Civil Code 1567, rendering the contract voidable. We make the following requests. A formal investigation into the parking enforcement policy and contract practices at Summerwood Apartments. Clarification of tenants' rights regarding the use of assigned spaces under California law. Intervention if the management is found to be coercively modifying lease terms or unlawfully towing tenant vehicles, and review of the legality of charging a fee for onsite unassigned parking spaces mid-lease. Thank you very much, and I hope we can hold Santa Clara landlords to a higher standard than the rest of the country. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul, and I know you sent this to City Hall.
I did.
And we forwarded it to our staff as well, so hopefully we'll get an answer on that and how we can help, even though it's private property.
Understood.
How the city can get involved in making sure laws are being upheld.
I thank you very much. I know if you start looking here, it'd be very productive for you. There's a lot going on at Summerwood right now with this new management.
Thank you for informing us. Thank you, Paul. Do we have any other members? Please come forward. Please come forward.
Hello, Madam Mayor and counsel. I guess I've been all done with all the city events. I told you guys about Spooktacular, and we did that. Javon never showed up. Poor grandchildren never have no fun.
He might have been in costume. You don't know. He could have been there.
You know what? Okay. But anyway, Albert, I need to really get with you about getting some parking out there at the train station. It's kind of leveled out. I've talked to a few people from ACE Management, and they said, yeah, they're really feeling the hurt from the no parking. And even the Amtrak, I talked to the, what they call a rail boss, and he said he'll kick it further up with Amtrak, maybe one of the commissions you guys sit on or something. Somebody will say, hey, you know, we try to get people to vote for these traffic and pay for this and pay for that, but yet here you got something that was working that's been closed down by development that never went nowhere, and also by a private company taking over city property, cutting out commuters. So I'm still really trying to get you out there to talk to people, listen to them. You know, they are the people who come into the city and work at the companies that really generate, but if their employees have to be on the highway four hours each way, mass transit is a waste of time. And that's basically what's happened out there. You've cut it by probably about at least 50% of what was coming in. Now, I don't make money off of people who drive their cars and park in the parking lots, because they get to stop at 7-Eleven on the way in. But I want to see the mass transit system work, not get stalled out because private corporation wants the parking lot, because their employees need parking, and they don't want them to park in their property. They want your property. And if you come out, you will see at 2 o'clock, that parking lot meant for commuters, three-quarters full. Now, those guys come in on the train, get in their car, and leave. Shouldn't be three-quarters full. Should be an empty parking lot, just like the other ones along the route. And I see it's almost out of my time. I hope I get you out there, please. And nothing more for you guys until I see what you do with that blanket.
Thank you, Howard. Always nice to see you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Please come forward. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to speak in strong support of Councilmember Suds Jane and to express my deep disappointment with the unnecessary and wasteful recall effort. One year ago, on Election Day 2024, District 5 voters made their choice crystal clear. They re-elected Suds Jane to represent them on this council. The election wasn't close. Voters had a clear alternative, and they decisively chose Suds. That was their democratic right, and their decision deserves respect. Now, David Curtis, the candidate who lost that election, wants to force taxpayers to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on another election. For what? What has fundamentally changed in the last year that voters need to reconsider? Nothing. This isn't about serving Santa Clara. This is about a former candidate who cannot accept the will of the voters. If Mr. Curtis had genuine concerns about governance, he could run in again in a few years, like every other unsuccessful candidate. But instead, he's chosen to weaponize the recall process, wasting precious taxpayer resources that could be used for our parks, our infrastructure, or our seniors. And let's talk about temperament. Mr. Curtis has threatened Mary Grisel, a beloved 83-year-old Santa Clara resident and tireless downtown advocate, with a lawsuit, simply because she expressed her opinion about who has done more for our city. Think about that. He is willing to intimidate a senior citizen and community champion for exercising her First Amendment rights. Is this the kind of person who should represent us? Someone who threatens senior citizens for speaking their minds? This behavior demonstrates exactly why voters made the right choice last November. Public service requires respect for dissenting views, not threats, not intimidation. It requires accepting election outcomes, not demanding do-overs when you lose. Meanwhile, Councilmember Jane has been doing the work we elected him to do. He's championed fiscal responsibility that turned deficits into surpluses. He has strengthened the professional leadership in city management. He's been accessible to residents, and he has worked across differences to get results. District 5 voters spoke clearly one year ago. They deserve to have their choice respected. This recall is an insult to their democratic decision and a waste of their tax dollars. I urge everyone who values democracy, fiscal responsibility, and basic decency to stand with Suds Jane and reject this cynical recall attempt. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone online, Assistant City Clerk? Okay, thank you. We are gonna move on now to consent items pulled for discussion, and Vice Mayor Cox pulled item 3L that she read, and I'll probably have to read it again. 3L, action on award of contracts for as-needed engineering support services to Electrical Power Engineers LLC, Flynn Resources Consultants, Inc., Handron Engineering, Lidos Engineering, LLC, excuse me, and Power Tech Engineering Engineers, Inc., with an aggregate maximum compensation not to exceed 15 million, inclusive of the option year to be funded from the Electric Utility Fund and the Electric Utility Capital Fund. Vice Mayor Cox.
Thanks. So I pulled this, and I want to center my questions really around three particular areas of this. Our staffing capacity, the 2028 readiness and 2032 readiness that it referenced, and then in light of the Bloomberg article that we read some of the messaging. So I don't want to detour too much from what the actual agenda item is. So I think sticking with, really looking on needing more clarity on why we're bringing these five engineering firms in. It's my understanding that each firm is getting a million-dollar contract with the potential of a $10 million expansion on that. I want to understand first if we're filling staffing shortages in SVP, or perhaps this work is so specialized that we need to recruit these outside firms. I do know that there is a staffing shortage. And then I want to better understand what specific functions these firms are going to perform that right now cannot be accomplished with existing steady staffing. And then again, we've been given several dates in terms of capacity and then peak load, and I think this one talked about peak load readiness by 2032. So I want to establish facts around our current load right now. If this is about contractors materially accelerating our path to that, I want to know if this is necessary to achieve the 1,300-megawatt capacity projected for 2028 and then to be delivered by 2032. But again, the article really painted a picture of a grid that's already maxed out, so I think it's important to talk about our current megawatt capacity, what's actually used, what's actually promised, and how the ramp load is gonna work, so that we can clearly tell the public that we're ready to go with this. And then finally, I think that maybe what I would like to see is perhaps a study session or a greater discussion agenda item brought back for clarity about maybe our messaging around SVP, because, again, it was such a, almost a hit job. You know, when we say that, an article comes out saying that we have empty data centers, not enough power to fill what we've promised, and then the next day, go to San Jose, they've got 200 gigs on, or two gigs online ready to roll. I want to know what our staff is going to do about that and our messaging. I think that one of the things I hear in the development community a lot is Santa Clara really is not a friendly place for data centers. I know that we are often polarized between our planning commission and how we view data centers and what they truly bring to our citizens, our general fund. So in light of a really terrible message about Santa Clara's positionality, I do want to see if there's opportunity, if not tonight, then to, in the long term, speak to our messaging around this, because I think it's critical for our infrastructure and for who we are trying to become.
All right, city manager.
Sure. Nico Procos, Director of SVP, is ready and can respond, and if there's any follow-up, I will support.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. So touching on the why are we bringing in these engineering firms, and I think you actually nailed it. These are very specialized services offered by these folks. I mean, we do have engineering staff in-house, but most of these entities will provide services to, for example, to support our efforts on the transmission planning process, and so those involve very intricate technical studies, and we really don't have the in-house expertise. We don't even actually have the positions, so it's not a matter of filling those positions. So they're very specialized towards that, and so that's why there's that need. And this contract is not really a new contract. We've actually been doing this for a long time. And they work very closely with our internal staff as well on these different efforts. And really, one of the main areas that they're focusing on is the transmission planning process. So this is the process that we go through every year as part of our expansion plan. So we're trying to figure out what projects do we need to accommodate all the future growth, and you mentioned going to 1,300. And that's really been our, kind of our laser focus for the past five years. And these folks work very closely with our internal staff to make sure that we're submitting what's needed to the independent system operator as part of that process, so that they can then come up with transmission to meet our needs. So you've heard about the LS Power line coming from the Newark area. There's another line coming from Metcalf, and there's actually, the next council meeting, we're gonna be asking for approval for a new project to support another line that's coming in. So it's been a very successful model. You know, in terms of our own internal staffing, I mean, you had a question about filling some of our positions. We are struggling. I mean, that's not really a secret, and especially in the engineering area. I don't think that that's really unique to us. I think if you ask any of our fellow utilities, you're gonna run into a similar situation. But it is a challenge for us, and it's something that we're, you know, we're working very closely with the city manager's office and with HR, and we're trying to get those recruitments out to really fill those positions. But again, those positions won't do what these consultants will do, but they do manage them, so they play a critical role in trying to help move that forward. I think you had a question about the data, the capacity coming online. We are still currently on track. The projects are on track to meet the growth needs that we're seeing, not only kind of the existing ones that are in the pipeline, but we actually are working with other entities that have an interest in coming to Santa Clara as well. And I can't get into too much detail on this, but we are exploring really a lot of alternatives and innovative ways of trying to maximize how many megawatts we can get out of our system and the neighboring grid. We're working with Emerald AI. We're working with the Stanford Bits and Watts folks, and we're really trying to get into a situation where we hear from the, all the data centers, they need more power. We're trying to be creative and look at that. And we actually are in the process of working on something that will allow us to kind of optimize how we operate our system and look at the substation agreements that we have with the various entities that have ramp rates, and is there a way that we can kind of accelerate those? So we're trying to be creative to meet that need. I mean, you mentioned the article. We all saw the article. You know, the two entities in question, Stack and Digital Realty, we are working very closely with them on meet some of their needs. And I think we're gonna be close, and we'll probably be bringing something forward to council in the coming months on that subject. On the subject of a study session, I think that's a great idea. What I would suggest or throw out there is that we do have the biannual update, and that's scheduled right now to come back to council on the 16th, cover a whole host of topics, but certainly that could be one way where we can kind of delve deeper into this. But certainly, I mean, if there's an interest in kind of focusing more on kind of the data center area of all this, I think we can certainly have more discussions with the city manager and maybe set something up if that's the direction that council wants to go. I think I covered most things there, but if I missed anything...
Yeah, I think in general, the messaging component might be for a different day, and you know, even the ability to ask, you know, what is the capacity that's actually in use right now? Have we overpromised and underdelivered? And is there truth to this article that's saying that we've put ourselves in a really bad situation? Again, that is not pertinent to the topic at hand, which is staffing, unless this staffing is directly related to increasing the transmission delivery by those dates.
And the item before you tonight is actually focused on what I would say is external to our system for the most part. There is some work that's on the, that's internal to our system, but that's about bringing in more transmission to our borders. And then we have the other projects, which are kind of internal. So it's kind of a mix, but a lot of what they do is us advocating for more transmission. I mean, I will say that, you know, your question about did we overpromise? I think that's kind of a complicated question. I mean, we have substation agreements, and they're different vintages. So the newer ones have ramps, the older ones might just have one number. Right. And so it's, you know, and being relatively new, I've only been here four or five months, but it's like trying to manage all those and figure out how do we accommodate, sorry about that, how do we accommodate what they need, the customers, while being mindful of those contracts, which our council approved. We want to be a little bit careful about doing that. But again, going back, we are trying to be creative, and I don't want to sound evasive or anything. It's like we are working on some things, which I hope to bring back to council in the very near future, which will allow us to address some of the, what we're hearing from the data centers in terms of, look, this ramp that I agreed to four or five years ago just isn't working for me anymore. I have customers I'm trying to bring onboard, and we get that. We understand it. It's just that we also want to be careful that how, what we do doesn't cause reliability impacts on our system and also external to our system.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, perhaps if I could ask for a staff directive, and I don't know if I could, what I would like to see, if it's possible, is, it doesn't have to be a study session or agenda eyes, but if you guys could report back how you plan to handle perhaps the article. I think that this is so important to, you know, the reputation that our city has in the data center and the AI community right now. And perhaps I stand alone on, you know, wanting to ensure that our messaging is powerful, that we can promise or produce what we promise, that we are prudent, that we're developing on a structured timeline that makes sense. But yes, that's what I would ask.
Go ahead, and then I'll go rest of council. Go ahead.
Sure. Through the mayor, just on that request, I think there are at least two ways that we can address what you're asking for. One, I do think when we come back on December 16 for the biannual update, that is a general update on the status of SVP, as well as all of our power expansion projects and goals. And so at that time, we can certainly have the larger discussion around our efforts to increase our megawatts as well as our messaging. In addition, there are key items that were mentioned in the article that relate to two customers that we are actively negotiating with. Some of that involves an active arbitration mediation, that we can communicate and update to council in a different fashion, as well as any modifications. And the modifications that the director alluded to would be modifications to substation agreements. Those need to come before council, and so we can discuss those specific projects then. And so I guess it's three ways. One, through our biannual update that is currently on your calendar. The other, through a confidential communication regarding mediation. And the third item, through those substation agreements that will come to you individually.
So I guess I would just say, does any of that respond in public to the article, though?
Certainly.
On your microphone, Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
Say it again, please.
I think what's lacking in that is... I think what's lacking in that is it doesn't make a public response about Santa Clara's position.
We can certainly address points that were raised in that article at the December 16th meeting.
I don't want it for me. I want it for the public, yeah.
Absolutely. And know that SVP and the city normally reach out to our customers, our data center customers. The division does have regular, I believe, quarterly meetings with all of our major customers, and so a lot of the direct communication happens there. And so we understand that there was an article, we're tracking it. We, on December 16th, will provide the council and the public with additional information and continue our regular outreach to large customers, both those that are active in the city and those that we talk to for business attraction.
Thanks. Councilmember Jane?
I have heard consistently from SVP that, you know, the load growth for almost every city in California has been flat, but SVP has predicted this dramatic increase, ramp in load growth, to doubling and tripling our load. And, you know, KISO has these clusters, they have these queues, and, you know, we have applied to them and said, our growth is increasing, and we've had trouble convincing them. We finally were able to convince them of this incredible load growth, so they have authorized or approved these new transmission lines for us. And it's very specialized work. It's, I get it, and I see that we need, you know, these companies to come in and do system level and operational engineering support, such as transmission and reliability studies, load flow analysis, project scoping, regulatory submittals required by the KISO and the North American Electric Reliability Corporation, or NERC. So there's very specialized work that needs to be done. And again, we're building out this transmission line, which is temporary work. So to hire full-time staff within SVP to handle this doesn't necessarily make sense. And so that's often why we use consultants to do this work. My question is, though, that typically, when I see agreements in our packets, I see the actual contracts, I see the scope of work or scope of services. I did not see that in this packet for these five contracts. And so that is probably why Councilmember Cox, or Vice Mayor Cox, had these questions about what are these companies actually doing? So it would be valuable, going forward, to have the scope of services in our packets so we know what we're getting for this money.
I think those were just comments, or was there a question in there?
They were comments, but I'm saying, can we get those contracts?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
There was one thing that I forgot that you touched on in terms of, you know, what's happening in our neighboring communities in terms of the data center wrote, and kind of what are some of the activities that we're doing. Through the transmission planning process, we actually submitted comments recently, and I'm not going to read all the comments, but one of the areas that we touched on was PG&E interconnected load adversely affecting SVP's reliability. And there's a whole process to go through in terms of challenging what's happening there, because we get it. I mean, there's lots of proposals to add new data centers in our neighboring communities, and we have concerns about, well, what does that do to us? And so we're starting the process, and I think we're also, you know, coordinating very closely with the Attorney's Office and the City Manager's Office in terms of coming up, what are some of the things that we can do in addition to just kind of doing comments through the normal process to kind of make sure that what we have done, worked so hard to get over the years, and we're talking five, 10 years, and I think Councilmember Jane was correct, that it took forever to get them to really listen to us, that like, this is real. And so what are we doing to kind of protect, what I would say, I don't think this is a very good term, but our entitlement, you know, to ensure that we're able to meet, you know, those commitments that we entered into so many years ago?
Thank you. Councilmember Park?
So I would think that you'd be able to provide the contracts almost immediately. I mean, that's something that should go really quickly. I mean, when can we get those?
So I might ask Dan Ballin from my group, who's worked on the contract, to come speak to the status of that. I will say, and the, Member Jane, a fair point, when we have the contract in substantial form, you know, we give it to you. Our job is, when we don't have the contract, to describe the terms. And in effect, you're approving it on the terms that we've presented and authorized and delegating authority to us to finalize, you know, the contract. A lot of these contracts are relatively standard in their form, particularly vendor, you know, contracts, so you might not always see it, but Dan Ballin was on the front line of this, so he can answer your specific question regarding this contract.
Yeah, the authority is for execute and negotiate and execute. The agreement is our standard form. There was some additional language that we wanted to include, specific to independent contractors, that we wanted to make sure that we covered our bases. So I don't think there was anything unusual about the template. It is based on what we've used for a lot of our standard professional services agreements, but it has a little bit of upgrades based on recent templates, that template upgrades that we've done.
Just want to understand, are all of the companies doing exactly the same work, or do they have their own specialties?
Yes, they will be doing all the same work.
I see. Okay, that wasn't clear.
Councilmember Park?
Yeah, I think that even if they're standard templates, I would think that the specific work that's being called out would not be in the template, and therefore would be useful to see the contracts.
In this case, it's, there might be occasion where the contractor, we're still in the process of negotiating. Some of them may push back. We haven't heard back from all the contractors. So we brought this as a negotiate and execute to allow us some flexibility to finish the completion of those negotiations. Of course, I suppose it's, we could always bring those contracts back.
Yeah, and I don't know that that's what's being asked for, Madam Mayor, if I might. I think the point that I'm hearing being made is you, I think you're comfortable deferring and delegating to us to manage the standard template, you know, and make sure cities' interests are protected and those things are included. You are interested in the specific scope of work. And so we typically describe that in the staff report, you know, when we don't have the actual contract. But I get how when there's an elevated interest in exactly what's being done, we either should be more specific about that in our RTC, or at least provide you the scopes of work if they're finalized, you know, at the time that you approve. It may vary, different contracts. Sometimes with unique contracts, right, you get the whole thing, and we make, and we go through, you know, the whole thing. In other instances like this one, where it's a standard template with some modifications still being worked out, what we really need to do is make sure at least the scope of work is substantially described to you so that you're comfortable with what you're approving. In this instance, once the contracts are finalized, they are public, you know, documents, and so if the council wants, you know, to see those, we can certainly transmit those once they're finalized.
Councilmember Park, are you done?
No, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but at the same time, the item that we're approving is action on award of contracts. And I'm looking at authorize city to take actions necessary to implement and administer the above agreements. And I think at some point, you know, it seems like they should be finalized by this point to execute agreements. And I think at that point, if you're saying execute agreements, and that's what the action is, then to say that, well, not everything's complete is very, very disconcerting to me.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think a lot of contracts are actually handled this way, again, where we're working on a standard template with a certain range of understanding that we will manage that in due course, you know, to finalize terms. You actually get a lot of contracts like this that are on, based on the standard template, where you are, in effect, authorizing us in our professional capacity to make sure the contracts say what we said to you that they say, and they're within appropriate ranges of minor modifications of our standard template. So this isn't an unusual practice at all. I get when, because I raise this issue myself, sometimes when I see that we've got the contract, we should present it to you. But if it's a standard template where there's things that are being modified, we frequently won't. And in effect, you're authorizing us and delegating to us authority to finalize with the City Manager executing, him making sure that all the business terms are as we described, us confirming that and making sure the appropriate, you know, risk management provisions are included. So it's not uncommon to do it this way here.
Okay, well, again, I kind of agree with Councilmember Jane, and usually we do see the contracts. And in this case, where you're asking us to approve something that will take effect even before the next council meeting. So at some point, I would think that they should be pretty final by this point. Right? And again, even if we do have templates and they are standard, standard practice things, I would think that the specific work, especially if you've got five different companies doing this, and I'm assuming you have five different companies doing this because you need the capacity, right? There may not be, I'm making assumptions now, you know what they say about assumptions, that, you know, we're doing this for capacity, but at the same time, I'd like to know kind of why we're doing this. Why do we need so much of this one work for something that, I don't know, I don't know that we have something so big or so different that it would necessitate this kind of item.
Councilmember Park and the rest of council, let me try and articulate. Essentially, we're discussing through this item whether the full contract should come to council or a description of the scope with delegation of authority. In my experience here, a little over two and a half years, we've done it both ways fairly frequently. I feel that actually more frequently, it's just the scope, not the full contract. It's important to note that the level of work that goes into negotiating contracts with our purchasing department, with the department, and the city attorney, often means that we've nailed down the scope of work, but we haven't finalized all of the final contract language. But we want to proceed toward council because of the business pipeline, your tickler file on when we can get items on the agenda. You oftentimes delegate authority based on a very clear articulated scope of work. At this point, that's almost a necessity to continue that path so that we can do the business and conduct business in a timely manner. We normally go through all of the appropriate finalizations with the city attorney's office, with the department, as well as the City Manager's Office. And so unless there's a need to have further discussion and change the process for how we bring contracts to you, my recommendation would be that we keep the process. When we have a final contract, we will certainly endeavor to bring that final contract before you. If, for whatever reason, we do not have that final contract, but we've achieved business terms, we will articulate those clearly in the staff report and request delegation of authority to sign the final contract.
And I'm not trying to argue what we have done or what we could do, but I'm saying that for this action, which is going to take place, it's going to start, the contract dates, I believe, start even before the next council meeting, we should be fairly final in what we're agreeing to. And at some point, that in my head says, are we asking for a little bit more money than we possibly need? Does, are there any issues that could go on with negotiations, you know, could this come back? Like, I would think that we would have the, you know, the skeleton, the structure of the contracts here. And again, hearing templates doesn't make me feel more comfortable, because templates don't have this kind of information. That's why they're called templates.
We're going in circles here.
Oh, it's not circles.
The City Manager has given a very adequate explanation on this, so.
Oh, I don't think he has.
All right, we're going to move on. Councilmember Jane?
We are on an extreme tight deadline. LS power, we really need that transmission line to go in at the end of 2028. There are a lot of data centers waiting in the wings to get that power. I do not want to delay this at all, so I will make a recommendation for staff's recommendation, a motion for staff's recommendation.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Jane, a couple of seconds. You can pick whoever you want, city clerk, yeah, the one closest to you. Councilmember Gonzalez. I just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, we've been working hard for many, many years to double our power capacity in Santa Clara and bring those transmission lines to Santa Clara. And I know that it sounds like we're on schedule for that. I just want to make sure when they actually come to Santa Clara that we are prepared with our substations to take that power so that we can distribute it. The data center world is a small world, and they talk. And what I've heard about Santa Clara recently, I actually don't like what I've heard. And the article that was put out there was deliberately negative about our public utility, which I think is a great utility, and we do amazing things. But our reputation is critical to our success in attracting and retaining these data centers. So I think protecting our reputation and delivering what we promise we're going to deliver at the time that we deliver, that we promised, is important. You can't pick a, well, I would say normally a newspaper, but people don't pick them up anymore. You can't go online to see a day, a day doesn't go by without the discussion about data centers. And it is a huge part of our general fund budget, data centers. They contribute more than anything, almost, they're almost pretty close to sales tax. And if we continue doing the right thing and delivering what we promise, they're probably gonna, our proceeds are probably going to exceed sales tax. So this is more critical to our city than almost anything at this point. And so the small world of data centers, we have to maintain our reputation. And so I'm just talking at a higher level, as opposed to getting down into the nitty-gritty, but I have to say, I don't like what I'm hearing lately. So please keep that in mind. And it is important that we communicate with not only Santa Clara and our residents, but communicate with the entire nation that Santa Clara is here for business, we're here for data centers, like we have been since 1994. We never talked about it before, but it seems like because of what's happening and how quickly the world is changing, that we want to make sure that we are, you know, still the West Coast, you know, leaders in this, and we want to make sure that we retain our businesses here in the city. And in order for us to do that, we have to be, our reputation has to be stellar. So that's what I want to leave us with tonight. Councilmember Chahal?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to say, the business environment we are working in for last, almost a year, the tariffs, shortage of equipment, and these are headwinds which SVP is trying to deal with. And I'm proud of what SVP has done in the past, and all these are hurdles which are delaying some of the things, which are beyond our control. You know, some in business environment, you have internal controls and external controls. Some of these are, we don't even control. And you are hearing, in the 10 o'clock in the night, you'll hear 15% tariff, in the morning, you'll hear 50% tariffs. And that is not a good business environment for a very big capital investment like SVP. And it spoils the relationship between our vendors and our supply chain issues. So given the circumstances, they're working very hard to fix the things, so I commend that, and I'll support the motion.
All right, Assistant City Clerk, motion by Councilmember Jane, second by Councilmember Gonzalez for staff recommendation. And that passes six to one. All right, we're going to public hearing, general business, item number five, public hearing, action on a vesting tentative map for a proposed hearing, action on a vesting tentative map for proposed common interest development of six single-family housing units located at 4503 Cheney Street. The recommendation is to open the public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open, and I'm going to ask for a motion to continue the item to December 16th, 2025 city council meeting.
So moved.
So we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Anyone online? Seeing none.
Councilmember Hardy was the maker of the motion. Who was the second? Thank you. Motion is to close the public hearing?
The motion was to continue until December 16th, I believe it was.
December 16th, 2025.
To a date certain, December 16th.
Please register your vote. And that passes unanimously. All right, next item is public hearing, action to approve amendments to the proposed 22-unit single-family residence project at 1957 Prunridge Avenue to allow for the installation of natural gas stove top, stoves, not even that, like stove top appliances. I will be recusing myself on this issue. I don't have a current conflict of interest, but I might have a potential one in the future. So out of abundance of caution, I'm going to turn this over to Vice Mayor Cox to run this public hearing.
Staff, would you like me to read the item again?
Not necessary.
Okay. Again, since this is a public hearing, we'll declare the public hearing open. City manager, would you like to introduce the staff's presentation first?
Sure. Thank you, council and Vice Mayor. This project was previously approved by the city council for a 22-unit single-family home development. The request tonight is to remove a condition of approval so that gas stoves can be installed as electric stoves. All units will remain electric ready. This project was approved as a planning, as a planned development, and the proposed modification requires city council approval, even if the REACH code no longer mandates all-electric construction. Our community development director, Afshan Hamid, will present tonight's item.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and council members. And tonight, I would like to first acknowledge staff that has been working on this item. Namisha Agarwal, she's senior planner, and Leslie Xavier, who is the planning manager, and Alexander Abbey, who is with the city attorney's office. They are all available online tonight in case we need to have their resources. So the request tonight requires two actions, and it's the first two bullet points. So the first action is the initial study mitigated negative deck and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And then the second request is approve the amendments to allow 22-unit single-family residences project at 1957 Prunridge Avenue to allow for the installation of natural gas stove top appliances. So the legislative action is to amend the planned development zoning, and council has discretion to approve or disapprove the requested modification. Because the approvals were for planned development, the developer at the time committed to an all-electric construction as a condition of the council's approval of the rezone. So the commitment to all-electric was cited by the council in its findings in approving the PD zoning. So the developer is coming back now before you, and they are stating that the modification is necessitated to meet, for two reasons. One, to meet market demands for gas stoves, and two, to provide flexibility during power outages. However, the residential units will be constructed as electric-ready, ensuring that future homeowners have the option to convert to electric stove top if so desired. So the project itself is 2.47 acres, and it's right here, and it's outlined in the, in the red. The general plan is very low-density residential. The zoning is public, quasi-public, and public park or recreation. The project, I did visit the site today, it's under construction. Some of the housing is, the framing is already up, so it's well underway. The adjacent uses to the north are single-family. To the east, there are a number of commercial uses, including a Walgreens over here. There is, to the west, a medical offices, and there's also a daycare. Not too far from Winchester and Prunridge, there's also a major public stop right here, public transit stop. And then to the south is Prunridge Avenue, multifamily dwellings, single-family homes, and commercial uses. So very briefly, as a background, on March 19, 2024, the city council did approve a rezone of the subject property from public, quasi-public, and public park to planned development to allow for the construction of 22 single-family detached two-story all-electric residences. Along with this, they also certified the environmental impact report and a vesting tentative subdivision map to subdivide the property into individual for-sale lots and for common lots for the use as a utility corridor, vehicle access, landscape, open space, and bio-retention. The developer has obtained building permits to demolish the previous structure that was on-site, which was a church, and they are already on the way for construction at this So a quick project timeline that I wanted to go over with you. And they, and this is really the first, when they went to, during the first review, they went to planning commission in February of 2024, and at that time, it was approved. Then in March 2024, they received council approval for a rezone for the planned development. And then in January 2025, the REACH code was suspended by city council as a result of the federal appeals court ruling. So because of that suspension, the applicant came back in February of 2025 to amend the condition of approval, P 23, which allowed, which required the all-electric, which included the electric gas, electric stoves, and they now want to modify that for gas stove appliances instead. In October of this year, the planning commission, before public hearing, recommended approval of the amendments to allow for the installation of gas stove tops, and it was 7-0, not 6-0 One thing I did want to point out, that when the application did come in 2021, at that time, our REACH code was in effect, which required the all-electric, and since then, it has been suspended. So the proposed project request is to amend the approved planned development to replace the 22 electric stove tops. The modified project will retain all project design features, including the density of 8.9 dwelling units per acre, and the project will no longer be 100% electric, but it would provide for, it would be electric-ready. So in order to take this action, we need a general plan conformance, and the cumulative greenhouse gas emissions, or the GHG, impact from the inclusion of natural gas stove appliances is expected to be minimal. The modified project will include a transportation demand management plan in order to offset the greenhouse gas emissions, and this will help to reduce the number of project-generated vehicle trips. And I can detail that out more if you would like me to. And additionally, the city is currently updating its REACH code to transition from all-electric as suspended by the city council to a new energy performance framework allowing for greater flexibility in meeting energy-efficient targets. All residential units will be constructed as electric-ready, ensuring that future homeowners have an option to convert to electric stove tops if desired. So the other, in order to take the actions, a zoning code conformance is also required, and the proposal to replace the approved 22 electric stove tops with 22 natural gas stoves does not alter the site plan, access, or parking of the approved project. Project construction will only slightly be adjusted to connect the gas utilities to the site. And then the SEQA analysis was done. Our consultant is here, and our consultant, David J. Powers, analyzed the initial study mitigated neg deck that was prepared for the proposal for the use of natural gas. The ISMND analyzed the potential impacts on air quality, energy, greenhouse gas emissions, land use planning, and found that the impacts would be the same as the approved project except for the greenhouse gas emissions. There is a mitigation measure that will be added to reduce the impact of the greenhouse gas emissions to a less-than-significant level. And as pointed out, the planning commission did hold a public hearing on October 8th, and there was unanimous recommendation for, for approval, 7-0. And the discussion topics were clarity on the REACH code update, reason for the request to use natural gas stove tops, an update on the project construction, reasons for not including natural gas when the initial project came to the planning commission and council, and natural gas infrastructure and cost implications. There were no public speakers at the meeting, and it was approved unanimously. So the recommendation tonight is to adopt a resolution to adopt the mitigated negative deck and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for 1957 Prunridge Avenue, and adopt a resolution to amend the approved planned development for 22 single-family detached two-story all-electric residences at 1957 Prunridge to allow for natural gas stove top appliances, subject to conditions of approval. Thank you, and staff is available here if you have questions.
Thank you, Director Hamid. Before we go to the public, we will go to council and staff, and with my very limited governance capacity and in the spirit of continuity, we will do all questions first and then responses from staff. I think that's it. Again, I do have a note here, and this script was drafted for me by staff, that says questions only at this point, so I'll note that. We'll get to comments later. So questions first, and I'll start with Councilmember Jane, please.
I guess this question is probably for David J. Powers. I don't understand how the SEQA analysis could say there was no impact on air quality, given that it's well-known that indoor air quality is adversely affected by natural gas versus all-electric. The second question is that these are for-sale units. Is it possible, are these units being sold in advance of completion? In which case, could the installation of the stove top be delayed until the unit is sold, and the appliance would be installed at the preference of the homeowner, whether they wanted induction or they wanted gas? Since the provision is there for either, if all gases is provided, then there's an additional expense to have to switch it out to induction. So it actually makes sense to ask the buyers at the time of purchase which they prefer. So those are my two questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you. I was more concerned about the timeframe because I noticed that the minute we pulled back the REACH codes, there was an application that was in February, but this did not go to the planning commission till November. I wondered if that is holding up the project. Thank you.
Good. I see no further questions from the council, so we will open this up to members of the public. Is there anyone in the audience? Oh, sorry, go ahead. Yeah. Did I do it wrong?
I think, I think you'll want to get the questions answered first, and then we can open it up.
You've got it.
Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. Director Hamid.
Yes. So first, I want to clarify regarding the impact, and I know David J. Powers is also here. But briefly, the ISMND said that there was a significant impact, but the impact is reduced to less-than-significant with the TDM measures. And also, we don't look at indoor air quality because that is SEQA in reverse. We look at the contribution of methane to greenhouse gases. But I will let David J. Powers, Patrick, respond to this one.
So, yeah, like she said, the SEQA analysis only functions to serve as a analysis of the impacts of the project on surrounding areas. The project would not impact itself, and we don't analyze impacts of the project on itself as part of state law. Does that suffice?
Yeah, I agree. I understand.
And then just to clarify, the, yeah, significant, a significant impact with mitigation was the GHG emissions, not the air quality emissions.
Right, right. I understand the, the mitigation.
And Councilmember Jane, your second question was, these are for-sale units, and these are being sold, and if they're being sold in advance for completion, and whether it would be an additional expense to switch out. I will let the developer respond to that question.
Yes, hi, I'm Steve Schott, president of SES Development Company. We're building the homes there on Prunridge Avenue. We, we are giving the buyer the option to, we are putting an electrical switch, electrical outlet in where the stove top goes, so the buyer could switch it out in the future if he would like to go to electric. We don't know where the construction will be when we go to sales. We have models ready for sales in February of this, of this coming year, and we have homes under construction now. And if the sales go well, we will have those homes, those homes will not be complete by the time sales go. But if the sales are slow, we will complete the home, and the buyer then would have, we would complete it with gas, and the buyer then would, if the buyer wants electric, they would have to change them out. But that's, that's the way a construction would, would go. So, again, it just, it just depends on how sales go. If sales goes quickly, we can have the buyer, have, give the buyer the option.
And Councilmember Hardy, the timeframe you requested, why was there such a lag time between the project coming in and planning commission? I believe it was probably because we had to analyze, go back and analyze the ISMND.
Thanks, and I guess I forgot to ask my questions there. So I'll tag on to the end before we go to the public. But, you know, if one of the options here is to deny this amendment in light of the suspension of the REACH code, I'm not sure how we are able to do that in the first place. And I guess I would ask the city attorney if there is ability with prudence to do that. And then to the developer's point about... And then, to the developer's point about the potential for moving electric, if electric goes in, and let's say the reach code is not suspended, or we change our climate action plan again later, does that still give this property the opportunity to go back to gas if the new homeowner wanted to do so? Thank you.
City Attorney, did you want to respond to the first question?
I'll respond to the first one. The answer is really based on how the project was processed. Since it was processed as a planned development with a condition to the project being that it be all-electric, regardless of whether or not the Berkeley case, you know, applied then or now, you have the authority to approve the project or to approve the modification or not. The developer had the option to process the project as a gas project, but it was identified for the developer at that time that they would have to do a whole new environmental study in order to analyze what the impacts of that would be. And the developer opted instead of doing that to include the electric option as part of his project. And so, our analysis done by my lawyer was that this project is not, therefore, given the nature of how it was processed and approved, with this being a discretionary action, it's not subject to the Berkeley case preemption. And it sounds like the developer has a comment to that effect. Happy to welcome that.
I just wanted to clarify that because that is true, what you stated. But, when the Berkeley case, the Berkeley case just happened when we were going in front of you, and we didn't know if it was going to get appealed to the Supreme Court because it was one on appeal, and it stopped there, but we didn't know if it was going to get appealed to the Supreme Court. So, and I don't think the city knew either. So, that's why we just kind of said, okay, we'll deal with this later and see where this whole thing goes. And it never went to the Supreme Court, so the decision became final. So, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, appreciate that additional thought process behind the developer. Doesn't change our analysis. You'd still have the authority to approve or deny. I think the developer's suggesting that, in light of that and other issues, that this accommodation be made in order to allow it to be the option, one or the other.
And Vice Mayor Cox, there was another question that you asked, and I need clarification on your second question. You asked that if electric goes in, but then if they want to go back to gas?
Yeah, perhaps I was muddled there. Because we are giving the homebuyers right now the option to go to electric if they want those hookups are ready to go, what I'm wanting to understand is, once electric, always electric? Or will they have the option to go back to gas then if a different homeowner was to move in?
And I would probably refer back to the developer for this on how they are working on whether they're offering an option for electric or gas and how that works.
And maybe, I'm not talking preferentially, but about our reach code potentially and what it intends to be. If something is changed to electric, does it deem then that it will be permanently electric, even though it's suspended right now?
Our reach code would only apply to projects going forward. It wouldn't apply to this project on the conditions of its approval.
So, it could go back and forth. A resident could decide to go back and forth to gas as long as they want it.
Yes, this is set up to be, in effect, provide that option, and the resident could do that for this project.
Direction here, I do have another councilmember question. Do I need to go to the public first, or can we do another round?
You can still do more rounds of questions.
Okay, sure. Councilmember Jane.
If it's questions only.
I think to clarify what Councilmember, Vice Mayor Cox is saying, is that you could dual-plum for gas and electric, but install the electric and then allow the homeowner to switch out to gas if they wanted to, which would be the same thing. There would be an additional expense, but it would be the same way as if you installed all gas and then the homeowner decided to switch to electric. My preference would be, if sales are going really well, you offer the homeowners the option upfront and say, hey, you can use both, but we wouldn't preclude the use of gas, given the EPCa decision.
Go ahead, yeah.
That is our plan, as, if sales are going well, is to give the buyer the option. That is our plan.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and go to the public. Thank you. Anybody in the audience first, or do we go online? You think I'd be embarrassed by now?
Madam Vice Mayor, if the applicant, I don't know if they desire to present on this, but this would be the best time for them to present.
Thank you. Third trip.
At this point, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. I don't think any presentation needs to be made on our part, so. And I'll be available for any other questions, so.
Sure. Councilmember Hardy does have a question for you, yeah.
I was saving this for you.
Okay.
When I read this, it sounded like you were hoping that this would make it more marketable by having options. Obviously, you have to put more infrastructure in there, but I'm guessing there was gas to this property anyway. And I will say personally, I have a gas top stove and an electric oven, and I love that. That was part of what I liked about my kitchen, and my family wishes I would use the kitchen more often and cook for them. But, by giving, it also gives a homeowner options when there is a power outage. Now, the nice thing is, we don't have too many power outages because we have SVP. But I do know commercial kitchens use gas. And even in our reach codes, we had that as a carve-out for commercial kitchens. So, I will say that I feel comfortable giving someone options. Thank you.
And can I comment about the gas? PG&E has allowed us to put the gas into the subdivision, so that is, the infrastructure's already there for the gas to be in the unit. So, just wanted to clarify that.
All right, is there any member of the public, either in chambers here or online, that would like to speak? I have a few callers online. Anyone in chambers? Great, I have Linda online, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Linda.
Thank you. I think that if you, the electric is actually better in a lot of ways. It does not provide, have a lot of gas in the area, which they're finding more and more, it poisons people. They call it natural gas, but it's really stinky methane. So, stinky is the added in so that you know that there's a leak somewhere. And that's a real problem, is leaks, gas leaks. PG&E will come out to Santa Clara, any house in Santa Clara elsewhere, to check and make sure that you are not leaking because it is a real hazard. Other thing is that electric is a little bit more expensive to buy, so they are, the developer is trying to be cheaper by doing the gas, which I understand, but I don't think it's right. I think that electric is the way to go. The other thing is, in any disaster, having a good camping stove is good, yes. I agree with having something else, but poisoning yourself to be routinely is not good. That's all.
Thank you, Linda, for your participation and comments. I have Kirk online, please.
Yeah, hi. Thanks, thanks so much for taking my comments. I had two general questions. One is the environmental report, I didn't have a chance to look through it, and I don't know if it was mentioned, but it sounds like the environmental report did not consider gas, or at least the PD permit was approved as an all-electric solution, which means it didn't have to consider it. So, by allowing, and listen, I'm a fan of gas personally as a cooking solution. I know everybody's trying to go electric. San Jose's actually banned gas to homes. I'm glad Santa Clara hasn't banned, you know, taken that kind of position. But a project that went in as an all-electric, sounds like they may have gotten consideration because of that. And so, I'd hate to see that consideration now be kind of obviated because they didn't have to go through that initially, and now they want to add gas at the end and not have to go through whatever environmental considerations or expense or whatever that is. So, I don't think that's quite fair for any of the other developers that start with gas. So, I would just ask, you know, if you could comment on how the expense and certifications and environmental considerations are looked at from that perspective. And, yeah, thanks very much.
Anyone else online? Thank you, Kirk, for your participation and comments. Do I give another opportunity for the developer to speak who's come up again?
I don't think you need to, unless the developer has any issues or things they want to present, available for questions.
I mean, you made the big trek up here, so.
I just wanted to say that it is more expensive to provide gas to the home and gas cooktops and electric stoves instead of all one together, all-electric. So, we're trying to give the buyer the option, and these are, you know, these homes are not cheap homes, they're expensive homes. And I do believe that, you know, cooking with gas is a much better way of cooking. I think we all agree, that's why you see restaurants cook with gas, not so much electric. And we have a lot of different nationalities that are going to be buying these homes, and they really like to, some nationalities really like to use gas exclusively, especially when it comes to WACS and everything else. So, you know, we're just trying to, you know, we understand that the environment, we want to protect the environment, and that's why we're not asking for any other utility to be gas, just the cooktops. The ovens will be electric, the water heaters will be electric, the furnaces will be electric. So, I hope you would approve our proposal in front of you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other members of the public? Thank you for your help with that, Madam Assistant City Clerk. At this point, we'll need to close public hearing.
Move to close.
Thank you.
Second.
I think it was Councilmember Jane. Just kidding.
It was Chahal, who got in there under the wire.
Throw somebody on this end down, all right. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please register your vote.
Madam Vice Mayor, your vote?
Oh, do I have to go down there because I'm voting here?
Do you want to just cast it?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that passes unanimously, six with one. Recusal, please. All right, so we'll move now back to council deliberation or action. Do I have any, Councilmember Hardy?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation from staff and allow this. I do understand the impetus for wanting to cook with gas and to have some options, especially if the power goes out, so I can appreciate that.
Thank you, we have a motion. Councilmember Park.
Yeah, I can let somebody else second, but I did have a couple of questions. But understood, so I'm saying somebody else can second.
So, we'll need a second first? Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Okay.
Always a game. Here we go, okay. Councilmember Park.
Yes, I feel like there's always somebody who wants a second more than I do, which is fine. So, I think this was brought before us because of a resolution of necessity. I think that what you're asking for is a preference. You have a certain demographic that you're targeting the units toward, too. And, I mean, you're trying to make it as wide as possible, but at the same time, I mean, you've made specific comments, so I'll have to think about that. I did hear Mr. Vartan's comments about, and I thought about this for a while, which is, yeah, we do tend to give a little bit of leeway to projects that follow the plan, that go all-electric, that have these things. And now, you know, I thought about this for a while, and I thought, are we giving anything away by not requiring any other discussions or investigations because we're now moving to gas? And what I hear from SEQA, what I hear from David Powers, that, you know, it's funny, every single time I've talked in SEQA, and there was a time, almost 10 years, where I came to council every single meeting, and almost every single SEQA, every single thing that we talked about was David Powers and Associates, right? Wasn't necessarily a good thing, but there it was. I don't think anything's going to stop this project, but again, I do feel that coming in with the guise of necessity, I don't think it's a necessity. I do understand that it is a marketing preference. I think it is a very strong marketing preference. I do hear and I do understand the benefits that people have said about gas. I know the benefits myself. I mean, the WACS was made for an open flame. It was not made for a flat stove, a flat heated surface, and we understand that. I mean, my culture uses that, too. But at the same time, I'm very concerned about projects coming forward, I mean, that seem fairly sad. I mean, I do hear Councilmember Hardy's concern about this project coming in with a change very late after its initial approval. Like, I mean, again, it wasn't just when the project was approved, but it was also when, you know, there was time, it's been a while since we redid the reach codes, we removed the electric, and I'm just concerned that other projects coming in that haven't quite been finalized yet, because I don't want to see this. I mean, I do feel that once you've committed to something, one of the things that makes you a good developer is you say, well, whether we, I mean, based on preference, you know, we will go through with what we've done, what we've agreed to, and then that will give you a better basis to approve bigger and better things from us in the future. Now, I kind of like that way of going, but here, I do understand it, so I'm not going to say anything about that. There is another thing that's somewhat unrelated, but my understanding is staff, in the notes to the Vice Mayor, put down questions only. And I feel like giving that kind of direction for any kind of, any kind of council discussion goes against the robust discussion that is promised. In the, in our packets, in every meeting, we talk about robust discussion. I have been someone who said, that talks all the time, that questions only doesn't cover the robust discussions that we would like to have. I mean, this is one of those robust discussions. These are not questions, these are comments. And I think these comments are, I think they're relevant, and I think they're important for future developers as well. And again, I really am disappointed to hear that. That said, I'm not going to hold up this vote anymore, but I do feel that these comments needed to be said because, again, this is affecting a lot of things. I do prefer the option. I would like there to be electric unless somebody explicitly asks for something to not be electric, even if that, you know, holds up the installation of their stove top. But, let's go to the vote.
Madam Vice Mayor, if I might just comment on that. Just to be clear, Member Park, appreciate your comments. That note for the Vice Mayor was not intended to squelch discussion. It's really a question of process. Before you hear from the public, the general protocol and for, in best practices for due process is that you only ask questions before you hear from the public, and then you can deliberate and make your comments. So, that's the standard practice with really all items that are public hearings, particularly quasi-judicial items, but for all public hearing items, that's the only purpose of that, is to order things so that questions are asked first, and then you have as much robust, you know, discussion as you need to. So, I wanted to be clear that that note was not intended to run counter to robust discussion and as part of the standard practice.
And I will note, it does say in there, questions only at this point. So, I'm sorry to put you on the fryer, City Attorney.
No, it's okay. I just wanted to be clear on process. Thank you, Member Park.
And I just wanted to be clear that, again, you And I just want to be clear that, again, you have said this before, because this has come up not just once, not just now, it has come up before, and I believe that's been the same, same comment. The clarification of that wasn't the full comment is very helpful, but at the same time, when you look at how this, this council has been led by a chair who's been, who's actually stopped discussions, I think that you probably need a little bit more clarification on how you, you specify that this is being asked because before public input, we should ask for questions. Like, I'm asking this because this issue has come up many times, and it's not going to stop coming up. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, and just, just as far as, I'm still getting my wheels as far as being on the council and the way that we run things, and I, I understood the time for, and the way that we run this, asking questions initially and then comments after, so that's, that's just typical of what I see that we, how we run the process here. And thanks to the developers for giving the options to those future buyers as far as, you know, even maybe having a dual-fuel stove if they wanted to, so I think that's, it's something that's, they're going above and beyond, you know, and it's going to be even more expensive, but definitely something that they see that a potential buyer might need or want and desire in the future, so I'll be in support of this motion.
Thank you, go ahead. And that passes five with one no and one recusal.
All right. Moving on to item number seven, public hearing, action to adopt a resolution of necessity to acquire certain real property interest on 1881 Dwayne Avenue, Santa Clara, California, from the owner of record for purposes of implementing the Silicon Valley Power 115 KV Transmission Line Project. So I'm going to declare the public hearing opened and refer to the City Attorney for a brief, City Attorney, for a brief introduction and staff presentation.
I thought you'd enjoy the irony in that, Madam Mayor, I'll be brief by my standards.
I said brief in capital letters.
Yeah.
City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This, this item is one in a series of this type of action that council's been asked to consider to implement SVP's 115 KV Transmission Project. This type of action only becomes necessary when voluntary acquisition negotiations have not been successful, and the timing of the project necessitates possession of the subject property. There are a number of legal procedural requirements built into this process, which will be outlined by staff, and we do have Special Counsel Gal Connor here tonight, available to answer any more technical legal questions you might have about the, about the process. With that, I'll turn the presentation over to SVP Electric Division Manager, Ally Jackman, for staff's presentation on this item.
Very good, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and members of the public. I'm Ally Jackman, Electric Division Manager overseeing system expansion for Silicon Valley Power. I'm also joined here today by Principal Electric Utility Engineer, Leonard Montilla, so I want to introduce him as well. He's been at all these council meetings as well and supporting the team. So we have been here several times before, so we'll go through the background here quickly. This is a new 115 kilovolt transmission line that will be all overhead from the northern receiving station to Kifer receiving station, traveling along Lafayette, Basset, and Dwayne. This project is necessary to accommodate our load growth and maintain our system reliability. It's going to transfer additional power from the new KISO 230 KV line that you guys have also been talking about today, the LS Powers line, from NRS, and redistribute those loads throughout our city. With this project, the capacity will increase to 1,300 megawatts. Without this project's completion, will be limited to 819 megawatts. We're currently potholing for the transmission line alignment and working through our 90% design development. We have been here several times before. Just over a year ago, we did come in front of council, and council approved our mitigative negative declaration, our environmental document for the project, and our route approval based on the items listed here below. The overall route is shown on the right in blue. It's important to note that this route does require 20 easements, as shown in the southern section of the route alignment, which is that dashed portion line. The easement acquisition process is lengthy, and so there are several items we need to complete. We first send a letter to the property owner that our city will appraise the easement area. We complete a fair market value assessment. We send that initial offer of compensation to the property owner for consideration. We then negotiate with the property owner for months. We obtained city council authority to execute purchase and sale agreements previously for the easement acquisitions, and we have also still continued to negotiate with the property owners. When negotiations do reach an impasse, we can come to city council, and they may adopt a resolution of necessity to authorize commencement of the eminent domain process, which can take up to 24 months. Pending the final determination of the value, the city has the right to obtain an order of possession for this, which can be within five months. So specifically, we are here today to talk about 881 Dwayne Avenue. We have been negotiating with the property owner for just over a year, with the initial offer letter being sent on November 13th of 2024. We went through a detailed informational exchange between March and May of this year, and in July, we had legal negotiations begin. We have reached an impasse on those negotiations. We now are coming to council to say that we are, in order to meet our project timing and implementation, we are requesting it to be necessary to commence the eminent domain We have several steps here in order to move forward with the process. So we make an offer to purchase the property from the owner of record based on the appraisal. We can engage in good faith negotiations. If that impasse is reached, we schedule a hearing on the resolution of necessity with a minimum of 15 days' notice to the property owner. We conduct the public hearing, which is what we're doing here today. We consider all testimony presented and adopt a resolution of necessity, making all required findings. It's important to note that this hearing only establishes the matters set forth in the findings, and the issue of just compensation for the taking is not up for consideration Moving into the findings, which I do need to read verbatim to enter into the record, we will get started here. Finding one, the public interest and necessity requires the project, so this project is necessary to increase our capacity, as I noted previously, to 1,300 megawatts, and without it, we'd be limited to 819, which is just not sufficient to meet our projected electric loads currently. Finding two, the project is planned or located in the manner that will be the most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. We had a team within SVP and consultants evaluate the potential routes, and came up with the most feasible route alignments and brought those to council. These were selected, the overall project route was selected based on its overall feasibility, least impact to residents and businesses, permitting constraints, ability to meet our project schedule, flexibility in power delivery, ease of maintaining our system, and the reduced construction disruption to the public. Finding three, the easement area sought to be acquired is necessary for the project. So this easement at 881 Dwayne Avenue is within the alignment of the selected route and is necessary for the project. This easement area is adjacent to the public right-of-way and is necessary for maintenance purposes and to ensure proper electrical conductor clearances are met. Finding four, all environmental review required by law has been prepared and adopted. So back in November of last year, the MND and MMRP were adopted by resolution by council. Finding five, the offer required by Section 7267.2 of the Government Code has been made to the property owner of record for the full amount established as the fair market value of the property. So just over a year ago, we did make the offer to the property owner to acquire the easement area based on a value determined by an independent appraisal. And finally, finding six, notice of this hearing has been given in accordance with Code of Civil Procedure Section 1245.235. And so on October 20th of this year, we did mail a letter to the owner, which included a notification to the public hearing and consideration of a resolution of necessity for the meeting today, and it also included a request-to-be-heard document as an attachment to the letter. So here we are with our recommended action, which is to consider all written and oral testimony presented at this public hearing. If we're satisfied that the information presented supports the required findings, we can adopt the resolution of necessity in the form presented to acquire the real property interests identified at 881 Dwayne Avenue, Santa Clara, California, making the required findings. And it's important to note that this does require five affirmative votes, and that staff will, of course, continue to negotiate with the property owner. That concludes staff presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you so much. At this time, we'll have questions from the council for the staff, and it's questions only at this point. Councilmember Hardy?
I just want to make certain that it's clear that the owner knows of this hearing, and have they answered back in any way? Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go now to move on to the public testimony. Each member of the general public wishing to testify will have two minutes to speak. However, if, oh, sorry, allow answer to question. Is that yes?
Thank you, Mayor, yes, yes.
Yes.
They are aware, and they did not submit a request to be heard. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Each member of the general public wishing to testify will have two minutes to speak. However, if you have an ownership interest in 881 Dwayne Avenue, or you are authorized to represent someone who has such an interest, you will be provided five minutes to speak. So, City Clerk, do we have a speaker?
Yes, we have Kirk Vartan online.
Okay, Kirk, you'll, unless you're an owner, you have two minutes to speak. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This, you know, the, the issue that I bring up, I, I sent an email about this a few days ago, wasn't planning to talk about this particular topic on this item, but seeing this as an eminent domain item regarding electricity and capacity, it further provides examples of what's happening with our electric infrastructure and why it needs to be bolstered. My comments are around why we need more capacity at the level that we do, and as such, we are now taking and demanding this from the public. A lot of these demands happen with data centers, and when I brought this, the issue of costs up in the past, it was, well, everybody's rates go up 5% or 4%, and I know in a couple weeks, that's going to come up as a council discussion item for a rate increase, but this helps bolster the argument of why should we have to pay as a community for these increases when the data centers are driving this substantial increase? And there are so many data centers in the city of Santa Clara, which is great for the city, but it does tax the electrical infrastructure as well as water infrastructure. So I would, you know, I'm not here to get in the way of this, or say you should or shouldn't do this, I'm just using this as another example of how the electrical infrastructure is being taxed, and the small people, residents and small businesses, are paying the fees for these and the burdens for increased infrastructure that might not have been necessary had some of these other larger projects that don't pay their fair share of demand for electricity, not just the cost of the electricity, but the infrastructure necessary to build it. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Kirk. Do we have any other speakers? Okay, public testimony, go by my script here. All right, I'll now return to vote. SVP and legal staff, is there anything you want to clarify or to add to the record?
Nothing from legal, Madam Mayor, and I'm not seeing anything from business people either.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
So a motion by Councilmember Gonzalez, second by Councilmember Hardy to close the public hearing. And thank you for putting your light on for that, appreciate that. Please register your vote. We'll now move on to council deliberations. That passes unanimously. So two notes from the City Attorney before we get into this.
Just, yeah, just quickly, Madam Mayor, just to remind you that your deliberations tonight are whether or not you can make the findings required to proceed with eminent domain, we're not discussing the value of the property, that'll be determined by either a judge or a jury, and then it does require five, five votes to proceed. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, any comments, questions, motions? Councilmember Park?
I mean, last time, I was told we need a motion before we can discuss, and I don't believe that's actually true, but I'm going to try to make comments anyway. I don't believe it's actually true that we need a motion prior to that.
It's not actually under our adopted procedures.
Agreed. So all I'm going to say is I'm not in here to stand in the way of this either, but, but at the same time, I think one of the callers, I think that Mr. Vartan is absolutely right. I think that we, when we talk about the infrastructure projects that we need, and even though the residents pay their 6%, what they, what they actually use, the question of why do we need these at all when it's not the residents that need the new, the new power coming in, I think that's a valid question. I think that a lot of the inputs that he had were, were very good, which is, you know, to the point that we are now taking, using eminent domain to take away private, private lands, but again, that's not what's before us. I was just noting that Mr. Vartan's comments did, did resonate a little bit, thank you.
You, Councilmember Gonzalez? Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion for staff recommendation by Councilmember Gonzalez, second by Councilmember When you're ready, Assistant City Clerk? Please register your vote. And that passes six to one. Thank you. Thank you, staff, for that. All right, next we have our last item, item number eight, action on introduction of a special event zone ordinance regulating and prohibiting certain activities within a protected area in connection with the 2026 major events at Levi's Stadium. City Manager?
Sure, thank you, Mayor and Council. This evening, staff is bringing forward an ordinance establishing a temporary special event zone to support public safety, transportation, mobility, and coordinated operations for major events at Levi's Stadium, including Super Bowl 60 and FIFA World Cup. These regulations are narrowly tailored and event-specific, and are intended to mitigate the heightened risks and operational challenges associated with large-scale, high-impact events. To provide an overview of the ordinance, its purpose, and the outreach plan for our businesses and residential communities, I'll now turn the presentation over to Assistant City Manager, Elizabeth Klotz, who has been leading this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I would be presenting on the proposed special event zone ordinance tonight, which regulates certain outdoor activities around the stadium during the major events. I would also like to acknowledge and thank the City Attorney's Office, especially Jennifer Byers, who has been very instrumental in helping me develop this ordinance. Levi's Stadium has a long track record of hosting major events. This includes Super Bowl 50, the College Football National Championship in 2019. However, with these events come reoccurring challenges. There is heavy congestion, unpermitted vending, counterfeit merchandising, and just a lot of access constraints around the stadium. Special event zones are also known as clean zones. The city has adopted them in the past. The city has adopted them in the past, and they are created to help manage some of these issues. The 2026 events create similar needs, and this ordinance is a proactive measure to ensure safe and organized operations during the two of the world's largest major events. As many of us in this room are acutely aware, Super Bowl 50 or 60 is happening in February 26. We have six matches coming in June and July for FIFA, and we are really trying to get prepared for those events at this point, and it will bring international attention and create significant operational demands on our city. These events require coordinated planning among the NFL, FIFA, city departments, and regional partners. As part of the League of Event Agreement, the city agreed to consider the adoption of a special event zone ordinance to protect public health, safety, and welfare during these major events. While this type of ordinance is in our mutual interest, a condition of us considering this ordinance was reimbursement of staff costs for preparing the ordinance. So why are we looking at a special ordinance? What does it do? While we regularly hold concerts and sporting events at the stadiums, Super Bowl and FIFA are events that are on a completely different playing field. This ordinance will help the city respond to the increasing scale and complexity of major events by establishing consistent and predictable public safety standards across all event organizers and activities. It'll ensure safe and efficient movement for attendees, workers, transit services, emergency responders, and will also protect residents and neighborhoods that will have impacts from these events. It'll also support operational coordination for load-in, security screening, credentialing, media operations, and logistics, and also reduce risks posed by unpermitted fruit sales, counterfeit goods, and obstructive vending. And lastly, it'd also help maintain Santa Clara's appearance and community standards during these global events. So just to give you a brief overview of how we crafted this event, we took a lot of care in drafting the ordinance to ensure that it is narrowly tailored by being temporary, event-specific, and geographically limited to a defined zone around the stadium. It activates only during the specific windows tied to the event preparation, event operations, post-event crowd dispersal, and loadout. It addresses heightened safety and mobility risks associated with the large-scale events and focuses on certain outdoor activities: vending, temporary structures, signage, advertising that compede safety and operations. So this is the map of the special event zone, and it's the geographic area where the restrictions will apply. The zone is bounded by 237 to the north, going south on Calabasas Creek, heading...oh, sorry, going west on Calabasas Creek, heading south on 101, east on Montague, and back north on Guadalupe River until it reaches 237 again. This map actually mirrors the previous zones that the city has adopted for its prior ordinance in Super Bowl 50 and reflects where the city historically sees the most traffic congestion, pedestrian surges, and security operations. In addition to understanding the stadium's traffic management and operations plan and also the security perimeter needs, we were careful to include the highly trafficked areas that are trafficked by vehicles and pedestrians. We also encompassed all the, in the gray, if you look, are the, all the parking lots that will be utilized for public parking. You'll also notice in the tan are some of the event facilities that could be activated during this time. And then there's also several hotels, parks, and other areas that may be activated during this period as well. Now I'll provide an overview of the activities that will be regulated through this ordinance. There is a temporary suspension on vending permits through the zone. No mobile vending will be permitted in the zone during this period of time. Outdoor merchandise sales is also prohibited unless it is already connected in an existing fixed business location. This supports coordinated public safety and mobility operations by restricting pop-up or mobile vending that could interfere with emergency access, crowd flow, staging activities, and traffic congestion. Next are temporary structures like tents, canopies, inflatables, wireless equipment. Those require city approval to ensure that they do not obstruct access or create hazards in this zone. Free product sampling and outdoor giveaways are also prohibited to prevent crowding and congestion. What we see with these major events are that lots of vendors will try to come out and distribute and market their businesses, and it can create kind of an overproliferation of activation in these areas. And then selling illegal or counterfeit goods is explicitly prohibited. This is an issue that has been historically a problem at any rural sporting event as As the city already has robust sign regulations with regards to commercial advertising and promotional activity, the ordinance does not deviate from what is currently regulated under our sign code. All of our existing businesses are allowed to continue with the commercial signage for their business so long as it complies with our zoning code. What we are expressly regulating are unpermitted commercial advertising visible from the public right-of-way, including banners, LED displays, projection. Mobile or pop-up advertising installations are limited unless it is in the ordinary business advertising, ordinary course of their business advertising, such as transit ads on buses, taxis, delivery vehicles that are just in the course of their business and doing deliveries. Parades, races, marches, and similar activities will be required to obtain a permit from the police department. And those are all the regulations. Now I'm going to go over through the time periods for the ordinance. So for Super Bowl, the time period for these regulations would be February 1st at 8:00 a.m. through February 10th at 10:00 p.m. The FIFA World Cup will be for three, approximately three weeks, that's June 12th through July 1st, to allow for 24 hours prior to kickoff and the first-day match through midnight on the final match. One thing I'd like to note, and I apologize for the discrepancy in the draft ordinance, we had listed January 29th as the start date. It's actually a shorter period, so that will be February 1st start date for Super Bowl on the restriction. And then we would also like to designate a start time, just to be clear, for FIFA World Cup, that the start time would be 8:00 a.m. as well to kind of align with the Super Bowl start time on their restrictions. Any additional events? We're going to keep this ordinance, it's uncodified, but it can be reactivated by resolution for any future events that we might want to engage with. So this ordinance provides a tool for the city to address public health and safety concerns during the large events. It is expected that enforcement of this ordinance will be conducted by code enforcement as well as public safety personnel that are supporting the events. These public safety personnel that are supporting the events are being reimbursed through our event agreements. For enforcement, administrative enforcement applies to all of the violations. Each day of the violation is considered a separate offense. However, for mobile vending, those violations will follow the city code in Title V, and all other violations will follow the administrative citation process in Title I. The city may seek injunctive relief from the Superior Court to stop ongoing or serious violations, and these remedies do not limit the city's ability to pursue additional enforcement under federal, state, or local law. So once adopted, the city will need to conduct some significant community outreach to the residents and the businesses. The city will notify residents and businesses in and near the special event zone through multiple channels: email, city website, and social media. We'll do direct outreach with the permitted vendors and mobile businesses that are going to be directly impacted by being restricted from this zone to ensure there's clarity and compliance from them. We'll be coordinating with hotels, event venues, and the Chamber to help disseminate this information widely. And we're also working with our public agency partners, VTA and the County of Environmental Health, who actually does the food permitting for the county, to help engage some of these vendors that will be affected by this. We also ensure that outreach materials will be available in multiple languages to reach all impacted communities. And here's the staff recommendation. To introduce the ordinance, waive the first reading and direct staff to return for final adoption at the next city council meeting, with the updated date for Super Bowl starting on February 1st, and then the FIFA start time at 8:00 a.m. The city attorney will be authorized to make non-substantive edits needed before final adoption. And this concludes my presentation. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Questions. Vice Mayor Cox.
Yeah, so, and I know I brought this to staff's attention, but one of the things I wanted to be cautious of and get a little clarity on was, again, the court case that passed this year in Arizona, which deemed the clean zones unconstitutional in lights of free speech. And to clarify for those that don't know, again, a business owner was told he couldn't put a Coke sign out, I think, and won in trial because, again, he said as a business owner, he didn't feel like this was appropriate because it wasn't really a public safety concern, it was a franchising and merchandise capitalist concern. And that then, they also won that case saying that the city had unwritely given power to an outside entity to create legislation and rulings on the people within the city. So I want to understand how we are protecting ourselves from that same case. I want to, again, understand what we really think the impact is in public safety with this. I understand that we're calling this a public safety measure, and I guess my question's a little on the nose and rhetorical, but I would like staff to tell me if they can name a safety-related event at Levi's that was caused by temporary signage, window advertising, coupons, or tents. I also understand that because we signed a Super Bowl agreement that said they can get this or they can walk, I actually don't know what flexibility we have in this. I think that if we're looking at what's best for our residents, stuff like that, giving away coupons, maximizing benefit at something like this is what we told our public this would be about, and now it's a pretty massive zone that's taking that right away from them. I want to understand how this impacts the aerial signage and the things we want to do with the Economic Development Committee, what's going to be restricted on that? And then I think, just in general, you know, again, it would be great if we looked at this in terms of, yes, I understand rampant vendors, carts, there really can be impact to traffic, to safety. I agree with, you know, the unsafe food and all of that, but this advertising thing and people not being able to put out specials or put tents in their yards, I mean, it becomes pretty restrictive in the name of public safety. But I also don't think that we, at this point, have the right to pick and choose or adjust this at all, if I'm understanding our prior agreement with the NFL agreement that we signed. Thank you.
I had a similar concern. If I look at the map, it encompasses Mission College, which, in my reading of it, prevents students from having tents or canopies or inflatables for any of their events at Mission College. They would require city approval. That doesn't make any sense to me, for students to have events on campus.
Councilmember Hardy.
I think we're all going in the same direction because I had made a note, within the entire area, even an inflatable, so some mattress company is having a sale and they can't have one of those blowing something or others. It just, it doesn't quite make sense to me. I do understand how, right around the stadium, I've been at concerts and been nearly accosted by people trying to sell things as we leave. And I do understand that concern, and we do know that there's been realities over their not having a health permit. Now, we do have a ordinance, and my understanding is only a few vendors have actually availed themselves of that to make themselves legal. And how are we going to get any of the other vendors to play along if they won't regularly? That's my concern. And we didn't talk, you know, it didn't really, I looked for a penalty. Is the penalty enough truly to be a deterrent? Because it may not be. Would there be any way for someone to turn something in that is really a concern on the MySantaClara app? If we're operating by concerns and complaints, how would someone turn that in and let us know? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I guess we were all thinking the same as far as the tents and canopies and inflatables. And I just, a question as far as, is, you know, little Johnny going to be able to celebrate his fifth birthday or something with an inflatable jump house? And I'm sure there's probably exceptions, but just want to make sure that those neighbors who are really going to be impacted nearby at least can, you know, continue with their weekly or weekend events as well.
Thank you.
I wanted to understand any impacts on the Creek Trail, whether you couldn't have a race for a benefit or, you know, if it was a small race. I know a big race, you need city permits and all of that, but what would be the, what are the impacts on the Creek Trail use during these times?
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cox.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to throw one more on. Who will be educating the businesses and the residents in those areas about these implications? And if they do not feel like they were adequately informed of the consequences, what is going to be their vehicle to kind of contest that or, you know, talk about the limitations? It's a big area, and I don't know if we've done any impact study yet on how many businesses this will affect or how we're going to get this notice out to them.
Thank you. Councilmember Park.
Yeah, I think everyone's pretty much said it, we have the concerns. I mean, I looked at the area, and the area encompasses not just the stadium area. I think we actually expanded this at the request of people before, but the major retail centers in that area, almost every single one of them. And I guess that's it. I mean, is there a way that we could tailor the language a little bit better? Is there things that we could do? I mean, I don't necessarily, I mean, I could see us reducing the area as well, I mean, to places that we think people who are attending the stadium would go, but then again, I feel like if they're going someplace else that's not near the stadium to eat or something, I almost feel like they're fair game to any marketing that would be there. I would think instead, we would like to look at people who are, you know, again, counterfeiting, you know, not in good faith, advertising products, you know, those kinds of things, which I would think we have some ordinances or we have things against anyway. So I think you've heard the comments from everybody else.
I just say, I think that, shouldn't we have conducted the outreach before we adopted this and not after? The item, you know, ended up on our council agenda, but the map didn't end up on it until yesterday. So our, the area is in the entire north side, including all the residential areas, it's the entire north side. So what is the purpose of this? Is it for, really for public safety, or is it for advertisement protection for FIFA and NFL? Because it sounds like, I understand around the stadium, because you made a comment that, you know, it was the area around, like, around the stadium, but it's not. It's the entire north side, like, the entire north, it's about four miles, the entire north side. So I get it around the stadium if that's really public safety, and even advertising. I guess our convention center is excluded, and some of these areas are excluded because they're going to be part of, you know, what's going on. But somebody who lives next to the Guadalupe River, if they want to have a birthday party for their kid, they have to get a city permit? I mean, that makes no sense. So can we make this, you know, something that actually makes sense? Because the way it's written now, it doesn't make sense. And it might have had the same area in Super Bowl 50, but we're supposed to learn from things from Super Bowl 50 and not repeat the same mistakes. So, you know, what about our existing vendors that have their permits already? What happens to them? You know, that's interesting. You know, I think about it like, in the summertime, there's food trucks at River You know, I think about it like, in the summertime, there's food trucks at Rivermark that come every Wednesday night or something like that. Sounds like this would prohibit any food truck at all that's out on the North Side. Giveaways for restaurants. We have been harping on this for the last couple of years. We want our small businesses to benefit, make money, be successful during these events, but we're telling them you can't offer anything, you can't send flyers, you can't put advertisements in the street in front of your place, you know, buy two ice creams for the price of one, the Super Bowl, whatever. So we're basically telling other cities, you're all going to benefit, but our entire North Side will not because we're not going to allow them. Not only are we not going to allow them, but if they do something, we are going to crack down on them and arrest them. So I think that we have to change this to what the real purpose is. Is this public safety for the residents of, you know, Rivermark or Agnew Village? Is it really public safety? Or is it, do we need to, you know, tighten up the perimeter? What about all the areas also on the map that were, I don't know what's excluded? It's possible that the areas that were excluded are all business areas, but yet the areas, are they the parking lots? Are they all excluded?
No, those aren't excluded. Those are kind of to demonstrate why the area got so wide, right? Because you have so much, all those gray areas.
All the activities in there.
Yes, exactly.
So I get that, but to the, you know, to the east, all those residences over there? Why? Those are our businesses too. You don't have to answer this right now. Those are our businesses. Those are the ones we want to participate, plus we want to have events out there as well. So we want to put, you know, wrap buildings with banners. This would preclude that from us from doing that. Impact on Mission College. They have a lot of outdoor events. Uh-oh, are we going to arrest them? I mean, come on. Some of this makes zero sense. People with their parties. Impact on events. No food trucks. No small businesses. So I'm for the clean zone. I get it. I understand. But if it's really for public safety, put it around the stadium and those parking lots. But if it's for, to protect the advertisement rights of the NFL and FIFA, absolutely not. What message are we sending to our businesses and residents? And plus, they don't even know about it. They didn't even know they were included. We should have done the outreach. We should do the outreach now before we pass this. Absolutely. Okay. Questions?
Javon, you want me to start? You're okay. Yeah. So I think I want to start with the map and just kind of talk about what was thought through. Because yes, like, I think concerns have been raised about whether it's too big and we can think about whether or not we want to shrink it. But the map actually mirrors 2050. It actually is the geofence that we're using for some of our autonomous ride-share program right now. Because if you look at Lafayette and also Lick Mill, those are primary northbound entrances to get people, pedestrians and vehicles into the stadium. So when it hits Montague, those are kind of when the traffic kind of frees up. But we did look at why it was extended that far, and it is a big traffic impact for ingress and egress, extending that way. And then, as you, as we mentioned, that the, if we look, we highlighted all of the parking lots that would be activated during this period of time. So those are the reasons pedestrians will be walking over there. And those will be areas that could be targeted, right, by advertisers, marketing, people, food, right, kind of just targeting and creating some type of congestion and crowd in those spaces. And so those are the type of things that we're thinking about when we crafted this space. Also, to the north of it, there are potentially two sites that are going to be ride-share, drop-off, and pickup. One in Tasman East, so that's why we get out to that direction. And then also one pretty north toward 237. I think that's an existing ride-share parking lot. And so that's kind of how we get to the north, as big as, to the North Side. But I understand the concerns about the residences and potentially it's something we can discuss about whether we want to shrink that area.
Yeah. And just to piggyback on that, important to note that at our very last meeting, council asked us to expand the boundaries of our Stadium Neighborhood Relations Committee to include Rivermark. And now the boundary of the Stadium Neighborhood Relations Committee actually includes the exact same boundary we're talking about. And in part, that was done because of a recognition that even normal events at the stadium have impacts in this entire northern area. And so when we talk about the Super Bowl or FIFA larger events, the ability for mobile food vending, illegal advertising, and other actions that we would not like to have occur, we think that having the zone this large, we thought fit with the very statement that council made at the last meeting, saying that this entire area has an impact from the stadium. And so...
It was parking and people urinating in people's yards. It wasn't about, you know, sandwich boards and mobile vendors in the bar. That has nothing to do, especially with the businesses out there that we're going to impact from this.
So I do want to talk about signage, right? So existing businesses are allowed to continue with their onsite signage that's permitted for their businesses. We're not restricting that. It's unpermitted.
What about outside their businesses?
If it's allowed under the code, they're able to do it. I think there's certain issues with sandwich boards that are maybe already impermissible, not because of this, but because of our existing zoning code. So I want to be clear that we're not changing anything for existing businesses. They're able to continue to put the signage that is already permitted, so, under our code. What we're regulating is unpermitted commercial advertising out there. Just calling that out.
Is that a public safety issue? Is that a public safety issue?
Well, the issue is overproliferation of signage, right? If people come out and stick signs, sandwich boards, they're blocking sidewalks, I just, we just don't know the measure of where they are, right? That's the concern, right? Is if everybody is able to just come out and put up signs, and we have no regulation to take those down, then, you know, then we have to permit that activity, right? It just becomes, this is a way to help deter the activity so that we can keep our sidewalks and our public right-of-ways clear. That's the intention of the signage piece. I do want to go back to the questions. Yeah, if it's permitted under the zoning code and their signage, they can continue to put the signs up where it's permitted. So, I mean, a lot of businesses, like, if you look at the corporations, they already have their naming signage, but those are all permitted already by the code, and the city reviews those signs and approves those because they're within the code.
And I'm sure we could spend a thousand hours asking every specific one, but a lot of people want to paint their windows right now, you know, specials, whatever going on. So is that allowable?
I'd have, I'd have to look and see. Yeah.
I think the point is that this ordinance doesn't prohibit anything that businesses would be allowed under our normal code. And so it doesn't prohibit any...
We actually don't need it then in the business area. We don't need it then for the businesses?
Well, it doesn't address what businesses are currently allowed to do under our code. What it addresses are things that would occur in the public right-of-way.
Well, and I think, I think the issue is calling, you're right. Like, do we need to be express and put it in here and say, you know, if you're existing businesses, you comply with the zoning code, it's fine? I think the idea is that we put it here so that people know what they're allowed and not allowed to do. And so that's kind of why we specifically have put the language and drafted it the way we have.
But we didn't outreach to anybody about it?
That's correct. Okay. I do want to go through the questions, and I think, Glenn, I don't know if you want to take the first one on the case.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate the question. In putting this together, we looked at a number of different cases, you know, and issues that dealt with, you know, ordinances like this. So not just the Phoenix case that you're referring to, but we are familiar with that and did look at that, and that's really very different than what's being proposed here. The Phoenix code was enacted in connection with Super Bowl 57. They actually added some temporary sign allowances, you know, within this code. But what they did, and what ran afoul of the law, is they actually had the authority to approve such signage delegated to either the NFL or the host committee in that case. That was an unlawful delegation of authority. It did, in effect, create a content-based, you know, approval with respect to First Amendment speech, you know, and signage. And we're doing none of that here. People can still apply for, you know, sign permits. We're the ones who decide whether they get that permit or not, and we'll apply, you know, our existing standards. In Phoenix, there also weren't, you know, clear specified standards. It was, the discretion wasn't established. We're using our existing, you know, standards under our existing, you know, sign codes. So very different cases. Absolutely a concern of, you know, encroachment on First Amendment rights and the ability of, and the prohibition on cities to regulate, you know, the content of signs. Ours doesn't do that, and we don't delegate an authority to anybody else, you know, to decide what's okay and what's not.
So I just want to clarify, I believe the Arizona case was two parts, and that was the second one that you addressed. The first one was because they put out a Coke sign when the NFL supported Pepsi. And so what might be common in code for our people to do is advertise Coke products in an NFL zone that is a Pepsi sponsor, and that is what they deemed a violation of free speech. So are we protected against that?
Yeah, and that's an example of content-based regulation, and ours do not do that.
All right. And then we had a question about the public safety. We kind of went over the public, the ingress/egress issues, the crowd management issues. I don't know, we do have the police chief here, if you'd want to hear from him on some of the public safety concerns they might have in the area.
And why we need this entire zone to be set aside for public safety?
Evening, Mayor and Council. I will try to make a nuanced civics argument at this late hour. I want to give the first caveat that I'm not going to represent myself as the legislative body. That's your discretion. We're the enforcement branch. The council in its entirety has brought up very valid points. When we enforce anything, we first enforce them under the protections of our Constitution, and the First Amendment is a big one. These are, I want to emphasize, these are administrative citations. So if there was a public safety issue that we had to address at these events, we would lean more on our misdemeanor authorities that are already on the books, in the penal code and the vehicle code for clearing right-of-ways, and that's what we would lean on in the event of a public safety access emergency. The way I see these is more of a code enforcement issue, that they would issue these citations. And we would definitely not be sending our officers into storefront windows to rip down Coke signs and approach anything near a First Amendment violation by our officers. That being said, there are very real ingress and egress considerations. We see them routinely with illegal food vendors, or unlicensed food vendors, I should say, at our events, and that is, does cause sometimes a restriction of the egress channels, and that would be something that we would want to clear for public safety. But like I said, there are laws on the books that exist that give us mechanisms to free those ingress and egress lanes without leaning on administrative authorities. Hope I made sense. This is my 14th hour wearing this pistol belt.
Do you feel it's necessary to have the entire North Side set aside as this special event zone?
In terms of the need for a public safety access on some of these residential streets, I don't.
Thank you, Chief Morgan. All right. So we went through public safety. Now we're talking about advertising restricted and the need to, from public safety perspective, and I think we kind of covered that as well. Then it got to the Mission College question, and that is a good point. The, right now, temporary structures, if you want to erect within the zone, would require city permit or approval. And I think that does become overbroad when you kind of encompass this entire area for the city to have to permit or approve anyone putting up a pop-up tent. I think one of the ways that we could try to limit this and try to address the concern, right? The concern is people setting up event areas and putting up pop-up tents, selling food, and it becoming a dangerous area or dangerous condition in crowds, is that we regulate our city property. So for any of, anyone putting up a tent or a structure on the city right-of-way, public roads, or anywhere that the city controls, that we regulate it and limit it to that perspective. And I think that might be something that might be feasible, and it's already required, but it would just be clear to people that you can't just get on a sidewalk and put up a tent without getting city approval first. So if you would like...
That makes sense.
Put a curb out there.
Wow, that makes absolute sense.
The question about penalty and is whether or not that is enough of a deterrent. I know our legal team went through our codes, and we were trying to balance, right, our current peddling and vending ordinances. We were trying to balance what those violations would be. We didn't want to make it more egregious than what is currently allowed under our code. So we wanted to, you know, create the code that was consistent with how we enforce other violations in the code on a daily basis. As for reporting, yeah, we would be having an email address and a phone number to report complaints to. I do think the MySantaClara app will create an avenue there for people to file their complaints when there's a violation. We can cover the tent issue. Impact on the Creek Trail. Right now, there's no impact. We're not restricting anything, well, from this ordinance perspective. There may be something on the Transportation Management and Operation Plan for the event that might impact the operations out there, but the ordinance doesn't restrict anything on the Creek Trail. Now, for events, they would have to come in and get a special event permit, and depending on capacity, numbers, security needs, you know, we would have to evaluate it for that. But the ordinance is not prohibiting those activities right now. I got the question about who is educating businesses. Our office will be doing the outreach immediately after adoption of this ordinance, and we'll, even, you know, after we move forward with the introduction, we'll start preparing those and getting information out that this is coming. Food trucks. So I know a concern is about, you know, that there are existing food truck events. What ends up happening is when food trucks just pop up anywhere, it kind of does create that congestion issue. I mean, the event is very limited to the time period, right? So it's only the one week during the Super Bowl and then the three weeks during FIFA that they would be precluded from being able to have some type of food truck activation out there. And that could be the outreach that we also do, is to kind of figure out how we can coordinate and manage their events around these dates as well.
Right, because Rivermark, I'm just using that as an example. They have their summer series, and they come out every Wednesday, right, during FIFA, World Cup.
Yeah. All right. And I don't think I had any other questions. Please let me know if I missed something.
I have a few.
Okay.
What about our existing vendors that have permits? What happens to them?
So right now, you know, we've been, our existing vendors in approved location under the ordinance would not be allowed. They would have to be moved out. We're trying to coordinate a potential alternative, you know, partnerships for them. The city is doing a bunch of community events, and hopefully we'll be inviting the vendors out to those activations. But within the zone right now, under this ordinance, they would not be allowed to operate.
Do we offer them any compensation?
No, we don't have any compensation offered.
So who is also going to enforce this ordinance? And then who's paying for all this? Because this is due to Super Bowl and World Cup. How is it being paid for?
So right now, you know, the ordinance is, it's a mechanism for the city to, and public safety and code enforcement to go out and to deter these activities out there. It's complaint-based. We're not going to be actively doing it. Right now, from a public safety perspective, it would be during the event days, so there will be public safety officers that are out there working the events that if they need to have a mechanism to move somebody off a sidewalk or, you know, remove a sign, they would have the ability to use this ordinance to effectively use, to clear the area, right? And so, but from, these are, these would be cities... And so, but from, these are, these would be city costs. From a code enforcement perspective, we would be bearing those costs to enforce.
Councilmember Hardy, you've had your light on for a while.
Thank you. I appreciate when you said, what we can do is public property, anything that's set up on the sidewalk, or impeding a road, or anything like that. We already have a temporary sign ordinance that, I'm going to say it, it, it's, I remember before we had it, and that was mostly because there were political signs put everywhere and then left, and it was a mess. So, that was to help that, but I noticed that those temporary signs, such as, say, a Realtor, come out on the weekend because they know code enforcement isn't working. And so, that's a reality you would have. Now, I do like that our established businesses, if they had a way to contact and say, someone has set up something in my parking lot, and it's, it's not permitted, it's not appropriate, we didn't ask for this. I like that they're, they would have the ability to let us know, and that could be taken care of. If it was explained to them in that way, rather than, you can't do blah, blah, blah. Because there are, it, when I read through it, it wasn't really clear that anything that was already there and permitted was okay. And I read it twice, to make certain. Thank you.
Councilmember Chahal?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Coming back to the food trucks or events like that, you know, we have a multiple days activation for these zones. I can understand even day minus one day, that we restrict these food trucks, and we can restrict them on the main roadways, but, you know, North Side Library, close to the library parking lot, they have a food truck over there. So, I would suggest like we should make some exceptions for those, like game day minus one day, okay, you cannot do that. But all other days, yes, the business as usual, but you can restrict some of the positions, like you cannot go on the main thorough roads, but you can go internally. So that's my suggestion, how can we achieve that, basically? And second thing, if we have multiple parks over there, same thing applies to them, birthday party in a park, like they're putting a tent over there, like, what can we do, even if we want to? I understand from safety point of view, we don't want gathering, but bigger gathering can, can be risky. But on the non-event days, can we have some relaxations for these businesses or for these type of events? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Park?
Yeah, so I've been going, listening to all the input, and I've been looking at this presentation again. I think what we're kind of omitting, and I think part of it is because it started with a commercial context, and then we have one slide that says temporary structures and promotional restrictions, and then it kind of leaves the commercial context. But I believe that this is supposed to be in the commercial context as well, which means that all of these things, whether it's a tent, it's not a tent for, for personal use, it's not a chair for personal use, it's not a sign to, to support your, your team or not. I believe when I look at this in context, it is about commercial activity controls. And even when it says temporary structures and promotional restrictions, it's for commercial activity controls. When we look at outdoor sales, mobile sales, I like the fact that we've got this tied to existing fixed-location businesses. I think that when we talk about suspension of business, of vending permits, that we have issuance of special permits, time-specific permits, maybe a specific number of permits, where people can do their normal business, but everyone, I mean, if you're doing commercial business, then you're subject to these sign restrictions, right? And anyone that has a mobile, mobile, you know, cart, or they're doing business, or they've got signs up that are selling anything or offering anything, then they can be subject to a request from code enforcement to say, show us your permit, you know, are you allowed to do this? Did you sign up for this? And if you haven't signed up for this, well, I'm sorry, you're going to have to put those down, you're going to have to take these down. I don't think this is about college students setting up things for, you know, their clubs or, you know, supporting a, a team or supporting an organization unless they're selling something. I, I think that the, the concern, the other concern is, well, promotional materials, which is you're not selling something, but now we've got all these different things that say you can get this for free, or, you know, coupons. I, I do see, I do see, you know, a purpose for all of this. I also know that during big events like this, and we, we know about Atlanta and all these other things, but bringing in mobile carts and vending carts from, that aren't regulated, that do not have a permit, that you can't ask them to leave because we have no mechanism to ask them to leave, is a very dangerous thing. So I completely support having something like this, you know, so that if there is a questionable, if there is a questionable activity, if there is a questionable, you know, cart or business or booth, that we have an ability to ask them to leave. I, I think in that context, I concede a little bit more, I actually want them to be in places like Rivermark, I actually want them to be in places like our commercial areas, but again, this is a lot of work. And that takes me to my next concern, which is, I'm told, I don't know if this is actually true, but we have, we've got the, the person, the expert himself in the audience, which is, we, we only have two code enforcement officers. I would think that if we have a zone like this, and even if we, even if we manage the restrictions so that it's only about commercial, what is our ability to, to enforce this? What is our ability to actually make the, the zone that we set up, our, our imagined zone, useful? Right? But again, putting the lens, putting the filter of commercial activity controls actually makes more, most of this makes sense. When we talk about, you know, again, you, I think you have it in here, outdoor merchandise sales prohibited unless conducted by an existing fixed-location business. Permits that are already there, the signage agreements that are already there are still there for existing businesses. But if you're somebody new, if you're somebody that does not have an agreement with the city, then, well, you've got to follow these restrictions. And I'm sure that we can get to a place where we can let business as usual, be business as usual, invite a little bit more commerce in, but at the same time, put controls on unregulated vending, on unregulated signs, people putting up signs over signs, misleading people to their vending carts, to their mobile, mobile vending stations instead of the actual bus, actual businesses and things like that. I see the need for that, I agree with the need for that. I'm concerned about how we enforce this, given the, the scope, the size of the area, the number of people that could potentially be there, and the number of resources we have working on this. I don't know how we're going to move forward, but I do see it in the commercial context.
Thank you. So I'm going to go to, I didn't think there was a question in there. Was there a question in there? I didn't-
I don't think so.
I didn't think so. Okay, I'm going to go to the public now. Do we have any-
Robust discussion.
Do we have any public members that would like to speak? Kirk, go ahead, Kirk.
Yeah, hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. I, I, again, I've been doing stuff in the background, listening in, and what caught my ear was, this was presented as a public safety requirement or request or a public safety-driven thing, and when the chief of police responds pointedly saying he does not see this as a public safety need, then I think you need to reexamine the premise of this entire item. Further, I don't know where Howard is on, on this, but what I thought I heard was, even if you have a permit to operate in the city of Santa Clara, if you don't have a brick-and-mortar place, you are banned. Places like the stadium is his bread and butter for big events. I mean, that's like one of his prime things to do. So I, I'm surprised to hear that, even if you have a license, and again, unless I misunderstood that, that if you have a license to operate in the city of Santa Clara, if you don't have a brick-and-mortar place, like a, he does not have a brick-and-mortar place, he's got a cart, but it's licensed, one of the few that's probably licensed in the city that operates around the stadium, that he can't operate, he's going to be asked to leave. I think that's egregious. I think that's terrible, that you would require that, if that's what it actually is. And from a freedom of speech perspective, there's plenty of tabling and tents that get created, so you can have some protection while you're doing your First Amendment activities, whether it's liking the team, disliking the team, talking about politics, whatever it is. And it sounds like that is also not going to be allowed. So, I don't see this as a public safety thing, based on the comments I've heard, it does seem like you could have someone that doesn't like someone's messaging go around the city and start calling in code enforcement. So I think there's a conflicting message in this. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Edward, go ahead, Edward.
Yeah, speaking of brick-and-mortar, it would have been nice to have a related speak-up and maybe give a reason for why they didn't have the retail hotel/restaurant phase of the project completed by now for FIFA and Super Bowl, but of course, we'll probably have to wait another 10 years for that. And as far as the catering trucks, the food trucks, you've got the Mr. Softy Ice Cream trucks that come to the North Side of Santa Clara every week. I think it's like two or three times during the week they come to the North Side, so maybe somebody want to let them know that they won't be allowed in the area. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Edward. Do we have anybody else that wants to speak on this? Nope. All right. Council? I'm just going to, I'll start. I, I'm okay with a clean zone. I just think the area is too big. And I just want to correct Kurt Vortan, the chief didn't say he wasn't in favor of this, just, I asked him the question about the area being too large. That, that was it. I wanted to correct that. I think it should be surrounding the stadium and in the, in the general areas that the parking lots and others were normally, there are issues, and on the streets and public rightaways, the sidewalks, that would impede traffic or anything. I mean, I think that makes sense, to deal with the safety issue part of it. I just think the area is too big. I also think that we're going to have a very difficult time enforcing this. If you've ever been out to a game and you see those carts, they're everywhere. We, we, with our two code enforcement people, unless we bring on the cavalry, I don't know how in the world we're going to enforce any of this. And I know that's the purpose of it, is to do that, not to be in Little Rivermark when they have their events at the library or other things like that. So, I think that, I'm really worried because we did zero outreach on this, and this is going to, this is going to send a terrible message to our small businesses especially, that we have been hyping up to be ready for World Cup and Super Bowl. And you may say, okay, well, it doesn't make a difference because they can operate as, as they're operating right now legally, but when they see something like this that's going to restrict them with a list of, you know, misdemeanors or violations, it's, it's really going to, this is going to really blow up into something huge that doesn't need to be at all. So I, I think we should redo this and fix it, and make the area smaller, and get exactly what you need in there, and not anything more, because the message that, I'm really worried about the message that this sends. And, and I had one last question, is there no free speech areas? Are we doing away with free speech areas? Because usually you can't really do, there are free speech areas? There are?
Yeah, we're not, we're not restricting. So if they want to assemble, yeah, they'll be able to assemble.
Okay. And if some version of this, or this gets passed, I would recommend preparing a Q and A for the community, but I think it needs some work, and I think there's a little bit of time. If we can do some outreach and do some due diligence, fix this, and, and then approve it before we end the year. I don't see a problem with that, but right now, I can't support it the way it's been presented. All right. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Maybe I missed this, but as far as a ride share, are we saying that this is going to be geo-fenced and there's no ride share that's going to go in here?
For, for autonomous vehicle ride shares, so.
Like Waymo, only Waymo.
They're, they're geo-fenced from outside, they, from coming in, that's been agreed upon with them.
Okay, because I, I couldn't see people getting dropped off on the other side of Montague and walking across Montague to get to the stadium.
Yeah.
I think this is going to be, Super Bowl is probably going to be a little bit better. FIFA, I could see, just because of all the other events that we've seen around the stadium that with folks who are coming in one time a year, that were, it's a little bit more challenging for, for ingress and egress and things like that. So, yeah, so, thank you for clearing that up.
Yeah.
Councilmember Park?
Yeah, I mean, I know what we said, and I think that, reading this again, I actually can see some of these items here, not just in the current zone, but citywide. I mean, when I look at prohibit sale or distribution of illegal or counterfeit goods regardless of permit status, I can see that citywide. I can see that in Mariposa Plaza, I can see that in, you know, Santa Clara Square, I can see that everywhere. I think that, you know, we could set up the, the reputation that Santa Clara is the one place where it's safe to buy something. I mean, I think that that's kind of the, the purpose of something like this, where if you're going to get something, not only is it safe for you to buy this, but we know that the vendors that are here, that their carts and their tents and their tables and whatever, are also safe for the event. I think that is the purpose of what we're trying to do here, if we try to, to balance this. And again, the question that I, I have is the enforcement. And I have heard again and again and again that we only have two enforcement officers. I don't think that will be true, I don't think that only two people will be looking at enforcement at the time of the, the mega events, but, you know, setting up, having a, a goal and ideal that we're going to stop all of these things, free product sampling giveaways, promotional items, coupons, commercial services in outdoor and public areas, all of these things. And again, I'm looking at prohibit selling of, a sale or distribution of illegal or counterfeit goods. I, I don't even know how we're going to do that. I mean, I've seen bigger events with, with people at every corner that, you know, can't really stop this. And at some point, we can't do this in every part, every inch of this city, like I would like to do, because, well, that's just a, it's a practical matter. But I, I feel that anything that we do to keep the people in the stadium safe would be a good thing. If we can increase that area as wide as, as wide as practical, I think maybe the practical considerations will, will eventually limit the size more than our, our ideal of what the size would actually be. But it will simply move the people that are doing the things that we're trying to, you know, prevent in the, near the stadium area, it will simply move them to the other, other areas, other cities, other, other shopping plazas, other places where people congregate, other places where people are going to be when they're not at the, at the, at the events themselves, right? But I can see this at the, with the current zone, I just think that the language needs to be tightened up a bit, and the, it needs to be absolutely clear. At some point, I do think you are trying to preserve businesses, existing businesses, but, I mean, the presentation doesn't go, go through that as much. I'm looking through kind of the draft language as well, but, but maybe we could just make it a little bit clearer. But I don't know that we, we, that I would want to reduce the zone. I think that the zone is actually right for what we're trying to accomplish, right, when it comes to commercial activity controls. And I think at some point, maybe there would be some consideration, some resource, resource assessment allocation that says, well, this is the area we can actually do, and this is what, this is what the, the clean zone will be, a little bit more practically. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hardy?
Thank you. I'm going to take a stab at a motion. I want to ask Council, if we continued, it would be the same thing, or would it be better to say, send it back to staff with the comments?
I'm going to, the city manager and I have been talking about how to proceed in light of everyone's comments. I'm going to turn it over to the city manager to talk about that.
Sure. So first, I'll say, we've heard your comments. I think the best thing to do is to end tonight on this- to do is to end tonight on this, uh, with this item with clear direction, uh, to staff, not really action on the ordinance. We will reschedule it. Um, we will aim to come back at the first meeting, uh, in December. Uh, and because it is an ordinance, we.
What happened?
I don't know. We lost.
Use glens, use glens.
Hello, hello.
Mine's dead too.
All right, we're back.
Okay.
Don't know where I dropped off, but, uh, the recommendation was that counsel not act on the ordinance, but instead give direction to staff, uh, to come back with a modified ordinance. Um, I can go through some of the things that, that I have heard. Uh, as I was saying, we would endeavor to bring that back on your fir-, at your first meeting in December. This is an ordinance that requires two addition, two readings, and so it is important, uh, that we have two readings and, uh, complete this item before the end of the year. With that said, I, I think it's important to note that we've heard, uh, a number of different, uh, items. We, we've heard a desire to reduce the size of the zone, uh, tailor it, uh, to really the areas that, that are, are most, uh, needed, um, closer into the stadium, but also being mindful of the parking lots and areas of congregation as well as paths of travel. Um, additionally, there were questions about enforcement. I think it's important to note, uh, that there would be two enforcement, um, entities, the police department and code enforcement. Code enforcement is not the police department. Code enforcement has ran out of our community development department. Um, also, um, there were questions around what would be the impact to Mission College, as well as, uh, what would be the impact on our neighborhoods. I love the analogy of Johnny's birthday, and will Johnny be able to have an inflatable for his birthday?
Johnny loves inflatables.
I, I hear. Um, uh, there were also additional comments around the restrictions on businesses, and I think we can address that by coming back, uh, talking about the restrictions, but also being a little bit clearer on exactly what businesses can do, uh, and, and what's permitted. Not what you can't do, but what you can do. Um.
So staff, should the motion be to continue the item or to send it back to staff with the, with the comments for a rewrite?
Come back first meeting in December.
Come back first, come back first meeting in December, uh, in consideration with the feedback provided by the city council tonight.
And I, uh, one thing to add was something that, um, I don't know who brought this up, to include the streets, the sidewalks and public right of ways.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So the motion is to bring this back to our first meeting in December. I noticed staff has taken very, very good notes and, uh, been very aware of our concerns. So the motion is to bring this back at our next meeting, which is the beginning of December.
Okay. Yeah.
Sorry. Before you act, I just want a, a point of clarification. I think when we take a look back on the specific prohibitions, there may be things that we want to propose that are active in the entire zone, but other things that are in a smaller zone. Um, I just, because we're taking council feedback, I, I wanna gauge, um, interest in, we, we need to do more analysis and, and a lot more research, but is council saying zone smaller no matter what, or, uh, are you allowing to give staff a little bit, uh, flexibility for some provisions that may apply to a larger zone?
I, I would keep, I, I would keep in mind how this is going to be communicated to our business community especially.
Absolutely.
And whether it's, you know, punitive, or whether it's protection of them from all these outside vendors and other things, it has to be communicated positively. So I don't know what you mean by the bigger zone, like what types of things, but I can't think of anything that I would put in the, the larger zone that, that aren't going to look, you know, punitive to our businesses. I, I'll, I'll be open to looking at it.
Okay.
I guess, yeah. But I can't think of a single thing. Okay. So we have, is that okay?
Yeah.
For the motion? Who, who made the second? Albert? Are you okay with that?
Albert.
Okay. City clerk, do you have that?
Here, I had a comment.
So if I may.
The zone might be big or small. It's gonna.
I don't think she.
So if I may just read back the motion to the maker, um, direct staff to return to first meeting in December with a modified ordinance incorporating council's feedback. Does that suffice, city attorney?
Yeah.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at council. I'm okay with that.
We're all recorded, so you can go back and listen.
We understand that. That's fine, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Very good. All right. Uh, councilmember Jane?
Yeah, I see, um, two main driving forces, um, and I wanna see the minimal zone size. The first is of course, public safety. You know, what, what do we need to protect for public safety? Um, and I heard from the chief that, you know, the residential zones, we don't really need to protect those from activities. Um, but the second is, what do we have in terms of contracts with FIFA or, um, or, uh, or, uh, NFL that restrict certain commercial activities? Like for example, you know, if people are gonna be there all day, people come from out of town, they're gonna be hungry, you know, and they're gonna need food. So to have, you know, Howard come out and serve hot dogs, I think that's fine. But where? Where can we restrict that? You know, maybe it's, the commercial interests require 500 feet within the stadium. But beyond that, we could have food trucks, or we could have vendors, as long as they're not impeding traffic or public safety. But we're gonna have a lot, we wanna create a great fan experience. We don't want hungry, angry people.
Thank you. Councilmember Park?
Yeah, I was gonna say that as well, meaning, uh, you asked the specific question, city manager asked the specific question, do you want it to be, you absolutely wanna reduce the size, or can we, you know, have some flexibility to, to right-size it? And my, my response is, I would like to see it right-sized. Again, I don't want something larger than, you know, make it very clear. We have somebody mentioned, we want something very clear. This is for public safety. These are for, public safety is not just, um, threats to the stadium, but could be threats to people. Uh, could be threats to people's pocketbooks, hopefully. Things like that. I, I would like to see that. Um, when we talk about food trucks and vendors, I think that, uh, fixed vendors, you know, hopefully they've got, already got places where they're putting up their, their mobile, um, their mobile carts or whatever they have. And for people that have, that are food trucks and they are purely mobile vendors, maybe there ought to be a place for them. Like I know in Palo Alto, for example, they have a place where the food trucks just go to this one place, and that's where you go. And if you wanna go to a food truck, you go to this one street, and that's where you, you go. If you go someplace else, that's not part of this program. That's not where it is. And maybe we, we put out a special permit for that. We put out a special, we create a, a special, uh, place for, for these vendors. You make it, make it like a, a mobile, mobile marketplace. But I don't, not gonna prescribe how you do this, but at the same time, I think that we need a place where people can, can put, um, you know, I would like a marketplace type of thing where people can go out and get things, but I would like it to be regulated. And again, if we're gonna create a zone for regulation, I wanna make sure that with the police and with code enforcement, we can actually do that regulation.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Just wanted to, um, as far as lessons learned, I think the, our mayor mentioned something about, you know, was it the same zone that we used 10 years ago? Um, and what worked, what didn't work at that point to make sure that we incorporate some of those, those, uh, knowns from that past event. And I don't know, the, uh, our police chief had something important he wanted to say, but I don't know if there's something that you wanted to mention. Okay. All right. Let's just, go ahead.
All right. City clerk, when you're ready. Please register your vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you all for that. Next, reports of members, special committees and councilmembers, 030 requests. Councilmember Jane?
Yeah, I would like to report some gifts that I've received. On November 6th, I attended the VTA board meeting, and I received this United Against Hate shirt, a very nice shirt. And then I also received this Turkey Trot shirt. So for those of you who have not been to the Turkey Trot, it is a, let me explain what they said. It's sponsored by Applied Materials. The Applied Materials Silicon Valley Turkey Trot is the largest Thanksgiving Day race in America. It's on November 27th. It allows participants to start Thanksgiving Day off on the right foot by celebrating generosity and wellness with thousands of other runners and walkers committed to investing in their community. All event proceeds are donated to four nonprofit beneficiaries, Healthier Kids Foundation, Home First, Second Harvest of Silicon Valley, and Second Harvest Food Bank of Santa Cruz County. So, um, those are two shirts that I went. Then on November 13th, I attended a coffee shot chat at Sarah's Kitchen. Um, it's, uh, um, usually it's, uh, not hosted by, but, um, promoted by Mary Grizzle. And, um, I had a coffee and a, uh, bowl of oatmeal, and that was covered by the owner of, he insisted on covering my check. So that was, uh, a gift to me. And then on November 14th, I attended the opening of Ba Fang Dumpling. And at that event, I received this shirt. For Ba Fang Dumpling, it's, um, expanding to Santa Clara, and I received this cooler, um, from that event. And that's my report. Thank you.
Looks like you have a whole new wardrobe there. All right. Uh, councilmember Javon.
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanna bring forward, uh, 030 for, um, Santa Clara City Code Title 17, Chapter 17.15, Table 3, which is basically if a resident is building, adding 300 square feet, single-family residents, adding 300, 800 square feet within a span of three years, they are liable to improve the street ADA compliant. And multiple residents have complained that it costs them almost $20,000 to do that. And, uh, none of the cities like Milpitas, Mountain View, San Jose, Sunnyvale has anything like this. Uh, it's very restrictive and sort of, uh, a lot of financial loss to residents. So we wanna revise this particular, um, city code so that we don't put our residents into this financial burden when they already construct, construction costs are so high. So that's, uh.
Thank you. Councilmember Park?
If.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Were you finished?
Yeah. Second for the 030?
Or is that just brought?
030, I need a.
He's requesting it.
For a future.
Yeah, second and a vote, Madam Mayor.
Oh, you need to vote on that?
Yeah, to agendize it for a future.
I, I didn't understand it, so I don't know what it is.
Yeah. It's an effect, it's technically not a 030. It's really more of a referral at, at this point, but, um, a, a vote, a second and a, and a, a majority approval by council will get staff to act and potentially put it on an agenda.
Yeah. So, I'll let the second happen, Mayor, or do you want me to?
I don't even know what it is, so I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm abstaining. I don't, I don't understand what it was.
Um, per the council's 030 request, it can be written or verbal at a meeting. This is a ver-, um, a verbal 030. Uh, what your policy, um, calls for is a council member can articulate, uh, the desire to, um, uh, have a 030. If a majority of council supports that, staff will, um, agendize the item with a very, uh, brief item, not heavy research, but just to, uh, articulate the item, um, bring it back to council for approval. If the 030 is approved, that would authorize, uh, the staff time, uh, to conduct the necessary research. Uh, and so, I, as the city attorney said, uh, you, you would need a second and a vote, uh, with the motion. I do, because I, um, still have the floor, want to clarify. Uh, councilmember Javon said the street. I think you meant the sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
The sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
Yeah.
I, okay. Was, you made a motion? Did somebody second this motion?
Yes.
I did.
Uh, Albert did. Okay. So there's a motion and a second for whatever the request was?
May I read the motion back to, into the record? So, um, this is a gen-, agendized request at 030 to revise a city code at a later meeting?
Title 17, Chapter 17.15, Table 3. Uh, I can be slow.
Title 17.
Title 17, Chapter 17.15.
D125?
17.15.
17.
And Table 3.
Table 3?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. So agendized request at 030 to revise city code Title 17, Chapter 17.15, Table 3, at a later meeting.
Kevin and Albert, yours, is this for something different?
Yeah.
Okay. Kevin, is it for something different?
No, I'm, I realize with the 030, we can't, we can't really talk about this, but I was gonna add a little bit more context and clarity, and I was going to second if we didn't have that as well.
It's already seconded.
But I think it's all done. Thank you.
Okay. And my abstention is because I have no idea what this is about. All right. Passes six votes, one abstention. Thank you. Uh, you still have the floor?
Yes, yes. Yeah. So on the last VTA Policy Advisory Committee, we were given a bag from VTA. So I was gifted that, and, uh, at the Sutter Health Event, I was given a umbrella for that. Just wanted to declare that. Thank you.
All right. Uh, councilmember Javon, is your light still on? You wanna turn that off?
It was in regard to the last item.
All right. Uh, who else has spoken? All right. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just wanted to mention that, uh, a few of us were at the city, uh, school district liaison meeting last week, and, um, there's, uh, New Valley School Continuation, well, New Valley High School is gonna be relocating to the Benton site, and there's, uh, some ideas and some renderings that they had as far as what it could possibly look like. So as, uh, as they move and, uh, impacts some of the, the programs there that, that definitely are adults may be partaking in. That, I know our Parks and Recs, uh, director is gonna be, uh, and he will be notified as far as when that's gonna happen and, and how any, any of those issues may, uh, may impact, uh, the community in that way. And, um, there was, uh, another meeting last week that, that, uh, that Councilwoman Hardy and I went to as far as, uh, the regional wastewater facility plant that San Jose and ourselves co-own together. And, um, some of the development that might be going up there was mentioned as far as, uh, a Microsoft, Microsoft, um, data center and a, uh, some other, uh, businesses. And, um, I know Councilwoman Hardy brought up the, the issue of possible power that might be utilized there. So we'll see, uh, how everything pans, that pans out. But any, any, uh, any, uh, plans would be brought to our board, to our council for approval?
Thank you for that update. Councilmember Park?
All right.
Council Vice Mayor Cox?
Um, a report out on the Legislative Action Committee and the Cities Association Board meeting. Uh, the board held elections for their new, um, executive board. The president next year will be Tina Wallia of Saratoga. First vice president will be JR Fruin, who will be leaving the LAC chair position. The second vice president and then incoming LAC chair will be Elliot Scazola of Campbell. And the immediate press president will be Larry Klein. Secretary Treasurer will be Rosemary Comay. And then in the Legislative Action Committee, um, uh, didn't take action on anything, but we're supposed to bring back to the city attorney, uh, the request to look at our residential overlay zoning due to Redondo Beach's, um, adopted housing element that really relied on residential overlay, and that was, uh, contested by a developer called New Commune DTLA, which filed lawsuit. You're looking at me like you already know this. Our task was to tell our city attorneys to check in on our residential overlay zoning. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. City manager, report?
No report.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.